I'd like to call to order the Wynter Town Council meeting Tuesday, June 6, 2023, at 6:00 PM. We're in the Harvey Hearing Room. Roll call, please.
Counsel Honan.
Here.
Counsel Fisillo.
Here.
Counsel Munson.
Here.
Counsel Belcher.
Here.
Counsel DiMarco. Counsel Flacott.
Here.
Counsel Aiello.
Here.
Vice President Ruggiero.
Here.
President Luteri.
Yeah. Town Council will be entering into executive session pursuant to Mass. General Law's Chapter 30a, Section 21a 6, to consider the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property if the chair declares that an open meeting may in any way be detrimental effect on the negotiating position of public body. Town Council will return to open session immediately following the executive session. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Second motion by Counselor Belcher, second by Counsel Fisillo. Roll call, please.
Counsel Honan.
Here.
Counsel Fisillo.
Yes.
Counsel Munson.
Yes.
Counsel Belcher.
Yes.
Counsel DiMarco. Counsel Flacott.
Here.
Counsel Aiello.
Yes.
Vice President Ruggiero.
Yes.
President Luteri.
Yes. We are now in executive session. We are back from executive session. We -- I am asking everyone to stand for the pledge led by Counsel Honan, and then please remain standing out.
My pledge is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to have a moment of silence for Beverly Baracino, who passed a few weeks back. Beverly was the founder of the Wynter Bard Association, a nonprofit she hoped would bring together creative people working at a professional level. She also established the Wynter Bard Association and a scholarship for the Wynter High School to assist young people interested in continuing to study visual arts. Beverly was a former member of the Wynter School Committee, where she worked in the Procedures and Rules Handbook and helped save the E.B. Newton School, which is now on the National Register of Historic Places. Beverly was a lifelong art teacher, spent some of that career at the Wynter Public Schools. Beverly was just a very kind and loving person, and she will be missed very much. Moment of silence, please. Minutes from the May 16 meeting have been circulated, so I have a motion to approve. Motion by Counselor Belcher, second by Counsel Aiello. Any discussions, amendments, additions, deletions? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those who know, the ayes have it.
Abstain.
Under general information and recommendations, we have with us Matt Gortskowicz, who is the Chair of the FinCom. Matt is here to give us the final recommendation from the FinCom Finance Commission regarding the fiscal '24 budget. The FinCom, just to remind everyone, is a committee between the Citizens Finance Group and the Council Subcommittee on Finance. Matt is the chairperson of the FinCom itself. Karen Chavez is the Chair of the Citizens Finance, along with members William Galt, Brent Farrell, Shannon Pohl Holes, and Joe Hanlon. And our finance committee chaired by Rich Fisillo, members Hannah Belcher and Steve Ruggiero. I can't thank them enough for the amount of time and effort that they've put into going over this fiscal '24 budget. They've had well over a dozen meetings over the last three to four months. Just compiling this report is an encompassing job, and I know Matt is a very busy man, and we thank him for his services as well as everyone else on the commission. So I'm going to pass the -- not pass the gavel yet, Matt, but I will give the floor to Matt to give us his presentation.
Thank you, Counsel President. And just as a point of order, how do I advance the slides? Are you going to -- should I just?
Oh, I can do it. I can do it.
So I'll just let you know. If you could advance the slide two.
While we're getting the slideshow ready, the Finance Commission has put together a 10-page packet for us. It has been sent to the councilors prior to this meeting, so they've had an opportunity to take a look at it, but Matt's going to go over in more detail in a summary sort of way to give us an idea of what the commission came up with.
Well, as you're -- as we're pulling up the slide deck, I'll just want to start by, you know, thank you, Counsel President, for acknowledging the work of the Finance Commission. I also want to thank my colleagues on the Finance Commission for all their work and thoughtfulness and the recommendations that were presented to you just on Monday. I will try to go quickly through some of these slides. I think two things that I want to just sort of highlight with respect to the roles and responsibilities of the Finance Commission, I think there are two things that are important to highlight. One is that the commission, you know, per town charter filed a report with the town council recommending the certain adoption of the annual town budget. And second, that the Finance Commission has access to full and complete information involving all aspects of budget preparation process as it becomes available. And I want to thank town manager Anthony Moreno, Dylan Cook, and Robert Powers for all of their work to actually make that information to us both accessible, available. And they spent a good amount of time with us, walking us through the materials that we received in advance and then throughout our deliberation. So thank you for that. If you advance to Slide 4, I just wanted to quickly highlight our process a little bit in terms of how we came to our recommendations. We started off on April 12, about the same time the town council received a copy of the town manager's budget recommendations. We established a schedule and met weekly for, you know, in some cases several hours to go over the recommendations from the town manager. And we also then scheduled meetings with each department head. So with that, we were -- sorry.
No, it's me.
And so we met each week to do that. The department heads we met with are on Slide 5. I think you'll just need to scroll up a little bit.
Quite a bit. I don't even -- it's just nothing. Okay.
There you go. Just a few more pages up, and we'll pick it up from there.
One more?
A little bit more. Yeah, a little bit more right there. You can stop right there. So this is the calendar that we followed. Here are the department heads. We actually put a request out to all department heads, and there were a number of department heads off to the left here that we requested their presence and others we made optional. Given the limited amount of time, we wanted to make sure that we were meeting with the larger departments, and we did exactly that. And I also want to thank all the department heads. They came prepared, and they provided us with some really good testimony and engaged us in a dialogue that was thoughtful about each of their budgets. So I want to thank all of them for that. If we advance to the next couple of slides, I just want to highlight some of the -- highlight some of the recommendations included in the town manager's budget. Overall, the Finance Commission supports the recommendations of the town manager's budget with a couple of minor exceptions, which I'll note a little bit later. Some of the things that you have probably already noticed in the town budget is that it lives within sustainable revenues, which is important, and the budget is balanced, also equally important. This budget introduces something that the town manager refers to as the base budget, which we think from the Finance Commission is an improvement and something we absolutely support. Essentially, what the town manager has done is taken a look at all of the various shared expenses that were at one point budgeted with the town that were related to the school department and shifted those over to the school department so that we have a more accurate picture of what the school finances look like, and creates a base budget for both the town and the school. And we'll talk a little bit more about that, but that represents best practices, and it's a lot of how -- and it's how a lot of other towns budget for both town and school departments. So we think this is an improvement and creates greater transparency into the budget process for residents. There's a substantial increase in school aid, particularly Chapter 70 for FY '24, which is reflected in this budget. There is a 5.8% increase for health insurance through GIC. This was an area where last year we had some exposures, and we highlighted that for you. And I think over the last couple of fiscal years, the town has done a good job making sure that those budgets are adequately funded so that we don't have surprises during the year requiring additional transfers or supplemental funding. Salary increases for most of the unions and non-union personnel are budgeted at 2% and built into this budget, which is great. Also want to commend the town manager for having all of our union employees under contract, which was something that wasn't the case just a couple of years ago. And there's been a lot of work put into making that happen. So something else that I think we should be -- thank the town manager for. And of course, the trash and recycling expenses totaling $600, approximately $300 less than what was budgeted in FY '23. And the budget includes some subsidies for park and recreation, as well as the rink combined between the two, $60,000. So those are some of the more notable highlights. If you flip the page, thank you. FY '24 revenues for the town total $75.1 million across all of the different funds. The general fund, of course, being the largest fund. The general fund is what funds both the town budget as well as the school budget. I'll talk a little bit about enterprise funds, revolving funds, and the capital funds in a bit. This represents about a $3.4 million increase in revenue over FY '23. That's about a 4.5% increase. If you advance to the next slide, I want to focus a little bit on just the general fund revenues. General fund revenues total about $59.6 million, and as you can see, the vast majority of general fund revenues come from property tax, $37 million, $37.8 million to be exact for FY '24. This represents 63% of all of the town's revenue for the general fund. So most of what we have to support the operations of the town and the school department come from property taxes. The second largest revenue is state aid at 25%. It totals $15 million. Again, most of that is dedicated to school funding. There isn't a lot of state aid that supports non-school funding or the rest of the town budget. So really, the town expenses are, you know, predominantly supported by property tax revenues. And when you combine the two, you have about 88% of the entire town's revenue just from those two revenue sources. And of course, as you know, with property tax and proposition 2.5, there are limits to what you can raise in property tax. And of course, state aid is contingent upon the state funds and the state budget process. So some limiting factors in terms of our ability to grow some of our more substantial revenues. If you flip to the next page, I just want to highlight the fact that, you know, general fund revenues increase by about $4.8 million, which is about 8.8%. The town department makes up about $24.5 million of that, which is about 40% of the general fund revenues, and the school department makes up about 60% of the revenues. And again, that 60% of the $35.1 million is reflective of the budget proposal that the town manager advanced, whereby many of the shared expenses that were once on the town side of the ledger are now budgeted with the school department and are more accurately reflecting our total expenses for the school. All of the other funds, which comprise enterprise revolving funds and capital funds, total about $15.4 million. And the letter that we submitted to you goes into a little bit more detail about some of the enterprise funds, both revenues and expenditures. I won't go into it into this because I want to focus on some of the major drivers of the budget, but they are highlighted in the letter that you received. The next slide simply just highlights what I just described. You can see the town departments, general government services, public works, public safety, cultural and human services. Those departments, along with the shared expenses and the retiree and benefits, total about $24 million. You can see how they break down versus the school department at $35.1. And of course, you can see the enterprise funds totaling $15.4 to get total expenses of $75 million. The next slide highlights a little bit about what I just described, which is the concept of trying to create greater transparency in the town's budget by creating these base budgets for both the town and the school department. This is something when we presented our budget to the council last year, the Finance Commission presented tables which actually aligned the shared expenses with the school department's budget to give you that view. We were really pleased that the town manager included that in his budget this year. And again, it was something we highlighted last year and certainly supported, although it wasn't a formal recommendation. We were happy to see that it was adopted in the '24 budget. For FY '24, total educational expenses for the school department total $35 million. Again, you can see here all of the various shared or what were shared expenses, but, you know, expenses related to employee health insurance, debt service on school buildings only, expenses associated with workers' comp, unemployment, Medicare. These were all things, again, that were supported in the town budget that are now in the school budget, and I think, again, more accurately reflecting what is funded for our educational expenses. I do want to say, you know, as we were developing our budget recommendations, the proposed funding for the school department is about $1.5 million less than the needs-based budget that the town school committee voted on and recommended. It also doesn't include about $1.8 million in grants that support positions that are funded through those grants. And those are not positions that are one-time in nature. Those are positions that are critically important and need to continue into future fiscal years, so they're very much reliant on the continuation of those grants if they weren't -- unless there's other funding to pick it up. I'd also point out that in the presentation of the school department budget, there was discussion about the fact that it's about $500,000, just under $500,000 short of what is a level service budget. And what that means is, you know, the school starts the fiscal year a little bit behind, on their heels, trying to cover up what will be a projected deficit for the year. And so that's a difficult thing to do. The town superintendent has been identified for the commission various proposals that she has for addressing that shortfall if needed. But this is something that, you know, again, from day one, they'll be managing through for the rest of the -- throughout the fiscal year. I think it's also important to note that the school budget has been also constrained by the fact that there's been some growth in enrollment, particularly with the number of students that have diverse backgrounds and requiring EOL services and other specialized services that the town has to provide, adding, again, more pressure to the budget. The town budget does not include expenses associated with the Northeast Vocational Technical School, which is now approaching $968,000 in funding for fiscal year '24. That's an increase of about 110 over last year. And the Essex Technical High School, as well as the debt for the vocational school, remain with the town budget. So those two expenses, while they're educationally related, are not part of the school budget. They remain with the town budget. And one thing to note is the debt on the vocational school for this year is budgeted at $82,000, but we expect that that will increase to about $492,000 in FY '26. So, and not too far down the road, we'll see some sizable increases needed to maintain those programs and services. That doesn't include what we might expect down the road, too, from increases in enrollment in the vocational school, which will add some additional costs. So I'll talk a little bit about those a little bit later. As we think about just some of the major drivers, I think one thing that's important for the council to, I think, take away from this budget is that, you know, we see this very much as a maintenance budget. This is a budget that, you know, due to, you know, increases in health insurance, increases in the Northeast and Essex Technical Schools, union contracts, building and vehicle insurance, as well as retirement pensions, the GIC costs I mentioned. Most of those increases, year over year, are either contractually obligated or, you know, result inflationary pressures that eat up most of the 2.5% tax increase that you're able to do per year. So there isn't a lot of new expansion. There isn't a lot of ability to deploy new staff, develop new software, or make other kind of improvements that are often talked about or highlighted from many of our department heads, you know. And so I think it's important to realize that while, you know, many of our department heads express their ability to live within the budget and be able to meet their goals and maintain some of the services, it's really the services that, you know, we've been able to provide over the last year or two, and it doesn't necessarily reflect some of the extraordinary needs that we know are going to be coming down the pike. And with that said, I wanted to kind of briefly take a little bit about what we think is coming down the road in the near future. If you look at some of the long-term pressures that are impacting the town, you know, anticipated expenditure growth certainly outpaces what we think the revenues will be to support them. And, you know, we know that there are ongoing capital investments that are needed. We know our capital program falls short of meeting the deferred maintenance needs of our town, both the stuff you can see in our vertical structures as well as horizontal structures and things buried beneath the ground. You know, we have talked a lot about the maintenance or the need for a new firehouse, and that was a recommendation from the Finance Commission last year. The plate classification study, which the town is undertaking, will certainly result in perhaps some additional costs. The ARPA funding is being spent, and so those resources, while available to us, are going away. And I should point out, when I talked about general fund revenues, one of the things that is embedded in those revenues is $225,000 worth of ARPA funds that are being used to support the operating budget. Now, this is a reduction of almost 50% from last year. Last year, the budget relied on $450,000 of ARPA funds. This year, it's down to 225. This is a recommendation we'll highlight a little bit further in this presentation, something that the Finance Commission feels very strongly about in terms of eliminating that structural deficit, and pleased that the town manager's budget goes a long way to essentially reducing that in half. I mentioned the debt service for the vocational school increasing to almost $492,000 by FY '26. Enrollment growth will also add some additional pressure to those costs. The football field turf needs to be replaced. We know there are some repairs in the middle school. Parks and Rec will likely need a new home in the near future. Our OPEB liability is a liability that we know that we're going to have to start focusing on, particularly as our pension liability reaches its full funding in 2026. And of course, we need to continue to build reserves for things like vacation and sick and various accruals that we know will be coming up for expenses. This is just really on the town side of the budget. On the school side of the budget, I mentioned the fact that the school department, our school committee, has voted for a needs-based budget, which is about $100, $1.5 million more than what we're currently funding. And then we have a number of positions that are supported on grants, and of course, there's continued repair and maintenance of our school facilities, which I think the school department is doing an excellent job of, but it's going to, you know, as those buildings get older, are going to require more attention. To offset all of those, if you flip to the next page, you know, we do expect that the town will have some ability to redirect some of the money that is now going to cover the pension liability. Certainly, the OPEB liability will be on that list of liabilities that we'll need to ship some of those dollars to, and that's part of our plan, and I'll talk a little bit about that because it plays into some of our recommendations today. But we continue to pay down our debt service. The Ford Bank School rolled off the debt for that in '22. We know that the RFT Cummings School will roll off in '25, and so there are some opportunities for some increased debt capacity as we start paying down some of our debt. And again, union contracts are settled, and so while that provides us some temporary leave, you know, we'll be in another round of contract negotiations soon enough. But certainly, given where we've been over the last couple of years, it's really nice to have all of those contracts in place. And you know, certainly, again, commend the town manager for the work he's done to get us there. So, you know, with that said, you know, I hope that gives you a little bit of highlight of -- gives you the highlights of, you know, what, you know, we were really pleased to see in the town manager's recommendations. Wanted to think a little bit about the future costs. Again, I do think that while this budget is something the Finance Commission supports and we think is, you know, meets, you know, many of the current needs of the department in terms of maintaining level services, but for the $500,000 at the school department, it doesn't represent a lot of, you know, the pressing needs and things that the department heads would like to do, and no need to be done down the road. In terms of some of our recommended changes that we'd love -- like you to take -- to consider for when you vote on the budget next week, we made a couple of small changes. Again, one is to help the finance department recruit and retain some key personnel. The other is allowed to bring some capacity to try to generate some more revenue, particularly in an environment where we know there are state and federal dollars, particularly grant dollars that may be available, and wanting to be a little bit more aggressive about pursuing those. In order to offset those, again, we recommend reducing some recommended funding to the OPEB, particularly just the enterprise. That is a typo. It says impact both general fund and enterprise. It will only impact the general fund, so we'll fix that item. And so if I flip to the next page, you'll be able to see the more specific recommendations. So we're asking that the town council consider adding $12,000 to the finance personnel line, bringing the total budget for personnel from 475 to 487, again, allowing the finance department to better recruit for a position that they have posted. And then the additional part-time position, which we've budgeted for at $21,000, is a part-time, non-benefited position. We've put it into the grants planning department, increasing that line from $80,000 to $101,000. I think the goal here and some of the discussion we had was trying to develop some recommendations, short-term recommendations, that try to help generate revenue. So where are there investments that we can make in the short term, small investments, knowing that there's not a lot of available or discretionary funds in this budget to move around, that might give us an opportunity to certainly apply for more federal or state funds? And you know, we know that there are, you know, funds, you know, at the federal level through the bilateral infrastructure law that was passed, and there are certainly things that, you know, various quasi's and regionals associations are going after, and there may be an opportunity to try to do that, particularly as it relates to some of our goals around climate and other things. So this was a position that we thought would provide the, perhaps the Board of Zoning Appeals, some relief. So it's really designed to create some bandwidth and some additional capacity within the town to focus on some additional grant writing. If we flip to the next page, we offset that, as we're required to do per the charter, by reducing the OPEB -- eliminating the OPEB expenditure. Right now, the town manager proposed budgeting $25,000 for that. Again, because we feel like there is a good plan in place come FY '26, when the pension liability is paid, we feel that this is something that we can probably reinvest, particularly if it's reinvested in a way that hopefully generates some additional revenue. And then we just reduced the property town insurance line by $8,000 to cover the rest of the $33,000 needed to make those investments. We think that there is at least enough cushion in that account to be able to support that. So those are the minor recommendations I mentioned. Again, we feel the town manager's budget, based on the available resources, is, you know, we certainly support that, recognizing that there's probably a lot more we'd like to do, but again, looking at available resources and the need to maintain a balanced budget, we think that the town manager's recommendations are worth supporting, and it would encourage you to do the same. I will say that there's also a couple of additional recommendations that are things that the commission spent a number -- a good amount of time talking about. First are some easy ones, and again, want to, you know, commend the town manager and the team for some of the things they've done. You know, this budget is a marked improvement over, you know, some of the last couple of budgets we've seen, and really provided us with a lot of good information to be able to understand what's happening with respect to town finances. One of the things the town manager talked about is wanting to apply for the GFOA certificate, which, you know, we support, or we think that that certificate represents best practices in budgeting. It means that you have a budget that meets certain criteria for both the council, yourself, to be able to understand what's going on, but also residents to be able to understand what's happening with town finances. And we certainly support the manager's desire to want to do that. The transparency with the Wynter Public School funding is certainly something we support, and we're happy to see. The indirect approach, you know, last year, a lot of what we talked about, some of the recommendations, particularly around the funding recommendations centered around not having a clear or understandable indirect funding -- indirect approach to how we funded that in our enterprise funds. I think the town manager responded by coming back with a indirect methodology that is pretty straightforward and easy to understand, and something that we can build off in future fiscal years. So that's something we support. And one thing that we talked with the town manager about, it wasn't included in this year's budget, but certainly but certainly the information's available, and he seemed willing to, to accommodate us, which is to present federal grants. When we were talking with a lot of our town departments, you know, there's a lot of supplemental services, a lot of important services, frankly, that are supported by federal grants. And understanding what that, what, what is supported by federal grants, I think, is important, because it means that we need to have a strategy, and we need to have resources to continue to apply for and, and get those federal grants, or, or we risk losing sort of some of the benefits and services that we get from them. And so having a little bit of a lens into that, I think, will be important for the Finance Commission, but also for, for the town council. Another thing we talked a little bit about is really, you know, this is, you know, the first time in a while that we've had a lot of our, our key positions here in the town filled. This is actually, I think, the, the town manager's almost coming up on your one-year anniversary. I remember the first time I, I met you was when we were trying to prepare for exactly, I think, this conversation last year. So a lot has happened in a year, and with some of these key positions filled, we think it's an opportunity to focus some attention on some strategic planning, and trying to having, have more conversations about, you know, how we, how we grow our revenues in a, in a smart way. And as I mentioned, because most of our revenues come from either property tax or state funding, some of it involves better understanding some of the formulas that fund the town, whether it be through state or federal dollars. But, you know, really understanding what those formulas mean for, for, for the town of Winthrop. You know, are we, are we sort of below or above the average when it comes to other towns in the state? Do we have aspirational peers that we look at and try to benchmark ourselves against as we think about some of the challenges we're facing? And then the other thing we spent a little bit of time about is trying to, you know, develop a growth strategy. One of the things that, you know, is that we noted in the, in the, in the discussion around revenues is that our new growth, which is an area for an opportunity, you know, beyond our, our, our limits within property tax to actually grow revenue, has been pretty much steady at about $250,000 a year. I mean, it goes between 230 to 250, and that's been, that, that's been the average. And so is there an opportunity to, to grow revenue, but grow revenue in a way that is, that is sensitive to or where, where decision-makers understand what it means for the additional services that are needed? So certainly just, you know, you know, growing, growing revenue isn't necessarily always the best strategy if it results in a lot more services, or if the net revenue to the town, after the additional demands placed on it, don't, don't yield any revenue. And so part of this is to begin thinking a little bit about what that, that revenue and that growth strategy looks like. I mentioned a little bit about the town's structural deficit, currently at $225,000 in FY24. This is something we'd like to see eliminated, and again, puts this town on a stronger financial footing, particularly as we think about some of the pressures that the town's going to be facing down the road. It would be good to not have that structural deficit looming. And then other opportunities for increased efficiency and effectiveness, we talked a little bit about, and I think the town manager even recommended it in his, in his budget narrative, or suggested it in his budget narrative, that we look at sort of a business process redesign. And, and so maybe there's an opportunity for the town manager on a rotating basis, whether it be every two or three years, as we develop the goals and as we, in our budget document, measure the accomplishments of our departments, perhaps there's a rotating cycle where we can do an in-depth analysis of the, the, the business processes that are, are used to deliver services or to manage internally, and see where there might be opportunities to improve that. Some of that may be improved through some technology. We know that there's a, a current IT study that is, that is pending. I'm not sure that that will necessarily get at this, but would love to understand how that might inform those, those recommendations. So with that, I think that concludes sort of, sort of the presentation I prepared today. I think it summarizes much of what's in the letter that you received. I think the letter does have a few more details I didn't go into, but again, I wanted to focus on some of the, the bigger, more notable items, particularly as it relates to the current year FY24, to begin to look a little bit about, you know, what we see coming down the road, and trying to, starting to think more strategically. And it seems like we have the talent and, and the people in the right places to, to begin that thinking. And so we would certainly encourage that, and that's where a lot of our deliberations and discussions after and in between the various department heads' meetings focused on. So with that said, I, I think, again, we are recommending that the council adopt the town manager's budget recommendations with a few minor exceptions, and focus on, you know, again, some of the, the bigger issues and, and some of the challenges that we know we still have, despite having what I think is a, a, a pretty good budget for, for the town for fiscal year '24. And so with that, I just want to once again thank the members of the, the Finance Commission for all their work and for their thoughtfulness, and for the assistance they provided in, in preparing these documents for all of you, and happy to answer any questions.
Thanks, Matt. It's an incredibly comprehensive report, and, you know, we were lucky for many, many years, we had Bob Nguyen, who was the chairperson of this Finance Commission, and he's just an incredibly nice man, well-spoken, soft-spoken, believable, transparent, just a great guy, and you exude all those qualities. And I want to thank you for continuing the run we've had with Finance Chairperson. So thank you very much for that. The report is very comprehensive, and it obviously focuses a lot in the town, a lot in the schools, which it should. And, you know, the job that Tony and his team did in this budget is remarkable, and we've said it in many ways. It's, it's, you know, not that we haven't had good budget presentations in the past, but it's, it's as, it's as transparent as any budget we've ever had. It's encompassed a lot of the qualities that we asked for last year, and, and we thank the town manager and his team for that. But I will open it up for questions. Council Flockhart first.
In listening to the reporting on the federal increase in the debt ceiling, I heard that they were passing clawback of some of the COVID money, and I was wondering if that's a threat to us?
Yeah, well, it's good that you're paying attention to it. I think that, I, I think in the short, the answer is no. I think the clawback is related to monies that were unobligated at the federal level. So to the extent that the monies have been obligated and are currently with the town as the ESAR monies are, as well as some of the ARPA monies that are being used to budget for the $225,000, I don't believe that those are at risk for, for a clawback. This is something that, at the state level, we scrambled with over the past week as they were finalizing what they're calling the Fiscal Recovery Act for '23, the FRA. And, you know, again, there was some discussion about it potentially going from unobligated at the federal level to unexpendited at the state level, which would have been a, a real issue for many of our cities and towns, including Winthrop, but that is not my understanding of how it landed, and I do believe that as long as the funds have been drawn down or at least obligated at the federal level, you should be fine.
And, and again, I'll piggyback on what Matt said, and again, the job we've done as a town with Tony leading this, we, you know, good, bad, we spent the money we, we had to spend.
We obligated it.
And we did it in a financially prudent way, where we did not use it much at all on reoccurring expenses. So we did the right thing. We spent it when it should be spent. The schools still have some ESAR money, which will be gone pretty much at the end of fiscal '24, but that should not have any effect on us. Council Munson.
Thank you, and thank you, Matt. That was, I've come to, used to, I'm getting used to these comprehensive reports from you. I'd be scared to see who has to follow your shoes at some point. But I did have an interpretation question. At one point, you said, you noted that the vocational part of the budget was not on the town budget, but was more, or was not on the school budget side. Are you implying that we should switch it over at some point?
No, I, I'm not implying that. I think that, you know, I think there's probably some good reasons based on, on how we, you know, the nature of the relationship with the vocational schools, that it's on the town side. I don't feel strongly one way or another about that, and there may be some reasons that I'm not aware of for why it should rest on the town side. You know, it's very easy, I think, in the presentation to look at total educational spending. As we've done in this presentation, you can see the town budget at $35 million, and the roughly $1.1 million that we spend on both of those vocational schools. You can, you know, it's a, it's a relatively smaller amount, and you can, you certainly add it to what we're spending on education, but keeping it separate from the school department may have some, some desired benefit.
And just on that too, also, you know, the schools, everything that is on the school budget, the school has control over. The school has no control over
Oh, I see.
the dollars that are involved in either of the vocational schools, the Essex Tech. And to have the schools involved with that, which could be a fluid situation, and the children could change from year to year, and the cost could change from year to year, along with now a debt service that they're going, you know, the town's obligated to do. You know, I think what the school, we felt is, should be responsible for everything that they have control over. And that's why things such as, you know, benefits and such like that has moved over. But in the situation with the vocational schools, they just don't have any control over that.
Gotcha. If, if you don't mind, I just have one or two more. In terms of the indirect costs that you were asking for changes from last year's budget, did you see those indirect costs accurately depicted in, in this year's budget?
Yeah, and in fact, there's a, there's a table that the town manager included in this budget that lays out the various salaries and indirect components that he has allocated across the various enterprise funds, so it's, it's very transparent. It's included in this budget, which is available to all of you and, and the residents, and so you can see exactly how that was built up, which is a contrast to what we experienced last year. And, and so I think they did actually follow through with the recommendations to, to, to improve that.
It sounds like you're, two thumbs up on this town, this budget, proposed budget. Does, does the GFOA certification give us any kind of benefit? Or is it just a, a label to say we've done, we've gone above and beyond and made our, our budget proposal so transparent that anyone can understand it?
It's, it's like the Pulitzer Prize of budgeting, right? It's a, it's a, it's a bragging,
It's a bragging plaque on the wall.
It's a plaque on the wall. It'll look great, but it, it, you know, I, I personally believe in it, because again, I think the GFOA lays out a pretty strict criteria, and you can't get that plaque to hang on your wall unless you meet certain, your budget document and the way you present it meets that criteria. So it talks a lot about indirect methodology. It talks about revenue. It talks about FTEs. It makes sure that people who open this budget will be able to understand the town finances and, and understand them in a way that is hopefully, you know, easy to digest. And so we just support that, and it's, it's a, it's a good practice.
And a last comment, if you don't mind. I noticed that you mentioned the new growth section of the budget was about $250,000 a year, and that's pretty consistent, you'd say?
It, yeah.
My, I just find it interesting that our new growth, which can, would you consider that $250,000 would make us pro-development as a town, or is that pretty nominal? In comparison to a, a $75 million budget, $250,000 of new growth revenue, I would say, just in my interpretation, is not worth sacrificing any of the resources that make our standard of living here in this town worse. It's not worth it. So there's a bunch of recommendations for growth, and I would love to explore more of those, but I just didn't see is that the new growth from new developments was worth sacrifice? And you did say, "Let's be sensitive to Winthrop's resources." And I think I just wanted to make a, a point, a, a comment about that $250,000 is very small, and would not put us in any kind of, like, ability to do a lot. So it's not worth sacrificing, or, or taking exceptions to parking and other resources that are required in the, in the code or as it stands?
I, I think that comment is consistent, perhaps, with what we're recommending here in our, in our, in our, in our proposal. You know, I think what we're, we're basically trying to convey is the fact that there are limitations on property tax with two and a half. And it's 63% of the total revenues needed to fund all the things that we care about. State aid represents another 25%, and while there are years where you have increases, you know, it ebbs and flows with the economy. You know, there'll be years where it'll be flat, and perhaps even in some years decreasing, and those two sources alone represent 88% of everything you need to do to make this town function the way the residents expect. And so the new growth is the opportunity where you have, you know, new growth is where you have opportunity to, to create more revenue, to do more things, whether they be things that you want to do or things that you need to do. And all we're suggesting is that now's a good opportunity, again, with key people in place and with the talent we have, to think about, like, what is, you know, new growth is one thing, but new growth, if it requires a lot of additional resources, and the net growth, you know, if, you know, if you generate a dollar, but you have to spend 70 on, you know, new resources, and you only net, you know, 30 cents on a dollar, is that kind of the growth you want, or is there other growth that would allow you to net something that's a bit more, you know, more
Sustainable.
sustainable, or, or generates more revenue to be able to support some of the things that the town wants to do? And so that's all we're, we're suggesting, and I don't, again, think that's inconsistent with your comment, but it's something we should look at, because again, when you look at the base revenues available to support a $75 million budget, there just, there's some real constraints to, to be able to do more.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I will say, on that new growth, we're, we're pretty consistent with it, and, and it's a conservative number to, to a point. It's part of local receipts, but, you know, I think to kind of piggyback on that, you know, it's also in perpetuity, right? So every four years, that $250 is bringing in an additional $1 million, right? So it's also getting to the point where, right, it's, you, you want to do, and I think we've had this goal as a, as a council, pretty much, that we, we're not anti-development, but we just want to do prudent development and smaller development, right? We're a relatively small town, and we're a pretty condensed and thickly settled town. But I think we've been consistent, which I think is a good word, it's like a tortoise in a egg, right? I think we've taken a tortoise approach in a lot of ways with development, but it's not that we're anti-development in any way, it's just that we're trying to be prudent. But again, that money is in perpetuity, and it's just going to continue to build. Council Ayla.
I just want to double up on what Matt and Jim said absolutely. There is that cumulative impact where you get a small amount of growth year after year, and pretty soon you're talking about an extra $1 million or an extra $2 million if you're consistent at it and think about all that, potentially going to the school department or to other programs. And then the municipal impact part of this is, as well, if you look at what other communities around the Boston metropolitan area are doing with respect to housing, as an example, they tend to fill things with one bedrooms, two bedrooms. That minimizes the impact on the schools. I think that's sort of one of the things that Matt talked about, impact of new development. And therefore, it could be net-net additional resources for the schools if you're still allocating that percentage over to schools generally as part of your overall income. So I, I, I think the pace that we've been going on, for me, seems like a sensible pace that balances those things, as well as the type of development. Man, in addition to sort of, I want to just say thank you once again. Last year's budget was really a great step up, and this year's is, again, it shows the impact. In addition to having Tony and his team in there, this is just really a real, real terrific document. I, I want to just express my support for the budget changes that you all have, have proposed. I hope we can talk about that a little bit later in the day. Absolutely critical, looking ahead of next year, we are going to start hitting the wall on a whole bunch of things, and really need to have, I think it's important for this council, once we're done with the budget, we should not rest. We should really be thinking about next year's fiscal budget and the long-term fiscal stability of the town, and try to think about comprehensive grant programs, centralized databases around grants, trying to make sure we understand how we can punch above our weight with respect to bringing in resources from other places, making sure that we're looking at procurement. Are we competitively bidding out everything and squeezing every last penny we can of value out of the taxpayer dollar that we have? You know, if you can save 10% here, 5% there, 20% there, those kinds of things we're going to have to get really good at. I like, love the idea of the business process reviews with the departments. And, and Tony, I think you said it, probably the, the IT study we have going on is not going to get into the world of business enterprise software. I think that's going to be an expense we need to sort of think about how to bring those things in to get ourselves more efficient. And in addition to sort of pressures from the school and other departments' capital needs, I mean, we're still, in addition to the things that the committee listed, we still have a rather large problem with fixing the water system. We've got phase two of the stormwater runoff down the center. We're going to be getting an asset management report on streets, sidewalks, and municipal buildings, and school department buildings, that's going to put further pressure on the need for capital dollars. So I think this council will get through this budget process. I think this is a great foundation that's been set aside. But I really think we've got to work. is a great foundation that's been set aside. But I really think we've got to work through the summer and fall aggressively on having a strategy that Matt described that I know Tony supports. So don't rest after the vote on this budget, I guess I'm saying, because next year's going to be real tough.
Any other questions? All right. Well, again, I can't thank you enough. I, I do see one member of your staff of, of the committee, Joe Hanlon, in the audience. And I'm sure I know Karen Chavez is on Zoom and Shannon Pujols is on Zoom. And if I'm missing anybody else, I apologize. But again, I can't thank all of you guys enough. It's, it's, it's a huge undertaking. And I think, you know, as the finance subcommittee goes to most of these meetings, and I know a few councillors attended a couple of the meetings, it's, it's overwhelming to see the amount of work that's put in and, you know, just the time to generate this budget. I mean, to, to generate this document, you know, the, the budget is extremely comprehensive and, and entangles so many different items. But again, thank you for your time. And if we have any other questions, we will let you know. We will be having a public hearing shortly on the budget, and we'll be voting on the budget next Tuesday.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Take care.
All right. Public hearings. Well, we have a public hearing. We will open a public hearing on the fiscal '24 budget, which we basically just had. But we will open it up. This, this hearing will be continued. Whatever questions we have now, we could vet them out a little bit. If the audience has any questions, we could ask. We will continue this public hearing until next Tuesday the 13th, where we will actually conclude the public hearing and then vote on the budget. And this is a process, something new this year. We're trying to create a little bit more time. This would normally be a, a one-night deal with a presentation from the FinCom and, and a quick public hearing and motions. And we're trying to spread it out to give more time to the citizens as well as the councillors to digest the budget and the FinCom's presentation. So there, there is a public hearing open on the budget. The budget, as we said, is a basically $75 million budget. It involves every aspect of the town, all the enterprise funds, as well as the schools. And I will open up for any questions, public or council. Any, Mr. Schmidt?
Bill Schmidt, Precinct Five. So first, I, I haven't had a chance to really look at the budget in detail because I'm away. But I, I understand from what people are saying, I'm not surprised that the town has done a terrific job on the budget. I did want to make two points, which maybe I'll get to next week after I've looked at the budget in detail. But in the sense of growth in this community, I think, like most communities in general, there's more of an anti-growth perspective. You know, some communities are really big on pro-growth. I don't think most communities are. I think, I know what happened when there was development in Somerset. There's a lot, a lot of discussion about that in other communities. So I think, I'm not advocating for a lot of growth, but I think the temperature in the town in most cases is, is anti-growth because people don't like change in general. But on the same time, I think you have to look at where our community is going in the future. Because when I looked at past budgets, it seemed like on an annual basis that our costs are exceeding our revenue. So we're getting a bigger, bigger gap. And we rely a lot on property tax. So I would echo what Counselor Ayala said in the sense that I think you, you look at a capital budget over time over five years, I think you need to look at where the town budget's going to go over five years and figure out where, where we're going to be in five years and how we're going to get there to match our needs in terms of revenue. I also know, I don't know where the town is, but the state has legislation that was passed. We got in transit communities, which I think Britop is, and there's requirements for housing. I don't know what that is and where it's going to be in the numbers, but that's also something you have to think about. If you're going to have to add housing, where's it going to be? And I think, I do think the point about having housing with single units or multiple units or, or smaller units, you won't have the impact on the schools. Thanks.
Thank you. And I think that's very important, right? You, I, you know, I hate to say anti-development, but I think we're, again, we're trying to be, my philosophy would be, and I think the council supports it, is prudent development, right? We, we want the natural progression of development that's going to happen, but not to overrun us. Thank you. Any other comments? And, and I will just say that the FinCom's report will be on the website. Denise? Will be on the website tomorrow. And the budget, the fiscal '24 budget is on and has been on. And it's kind of like an interactive document. It's very easy to use. And I thank the town manager for that also. Ms. Vitaglione?
Thank you, President John Vitaglione, Precinct Five. Just a couple of comments. I totally agree that the FinCom presentation was terrific. Absolutely great for the town. And it's a preview done already for the FinCom, well, for the town manager, for putting it up here. I put it a lot better than that. I've been kind of attending these meetings that, in this building, for a very long time. And this is maybe the finest presentation of the budget proposal that I've ever seen. It's a real big achievement, everyone involved.
That's awesome.
A very small line, if you don't mind. At the last meeting, I, I complimented Councilor Ayala's leadership in pushing for traffic calming throughout town. And one of them was, for example, making sure that there was adequate coverage of crosswalks in the town for pedestrian safety. And I wanted to make sure that the budget that, that, you know, considering right now, has enough money yet to, for example, start, you know, to, to work on the existing crosswalks in the town before you even get into, you know, you know, designing provisions for, for new crosswalks. But I, I've noticed that a lot of the crosswalks in the town right now that are in place are fading. And I would just like to make a pitch to the town, you know, to use, to make sure there's enough money in the operational budget, wherever that might be, you know, to, you know, to make sure that the existing crosswalks are adequately, and I think we have a very good public works department. They know how to do it and, and they do it well.
And, and I will say that crosswalks have been being addressed over the past several weeks. And I think they've done a really good job. And I, and I think the easy answer is there's never enough money, right, to do exactly what you want to do. But I do commend the DPW for the work that they have done on the crosswalks and will continue to do. But thank you, John.
Thank you.
Questions on the budget? Anything on Zoo? Denise? No? Councillors?
I have a bunch of smaller questions.
No, absolutely.
But my, my, my instinct is to just, Tony, I think, one of the things that would be helpful is that the last report we have here in terms of the amount of revenue that we're seeing in a particular revenue source is as of March of this year.
And it would be helpful, I'm, I'm assuming you have April and maybe even May's budgets. It would be helpful, maybe even get supplemental sheets just before we get these. I know they've been working on them since the beginning, but
I guess you updated numbers, but it won't be all spread out like that, but on a cumulative basis.
Yeah, it would be helpful because, you know, just, just as an example, we have one, a line item that was voted for $67,428, but we only have $16 of revenue coming against that line item. I know it's lumpy.
Yeah.
So it, it would be great to sort of take some of the mystery out of how we ended up with an FY24 estimate. Thank you.
Especially on local receipts, it's really important.
Because you have stuff like excess tax that comes in and, and a group, right, that comes in in a bunch. And it is a little misleading, but again, the budget has to be made earlier in the year. But it would be good to get a supplemental sheet. And I think Robbie's on, so we could ask Robbie.
That'd be great.
Any other questions? And again?
One more?
Yeah, sure.
One last one. I did a crosswalk in a couple of places between the number of employees we have by department in the master sheet and the number of employees that show up in a department summary. And they, they don't always, they're not always the same number. Sometimes off one or two, sometimes off significant. We should just go through that to make sure that we catch it all 100%. Just imagine it's different databases that produce different estimates.
Yeah, police environment might be a little off because I'm not sure there are all the reserve officers, the Cal, Talley, and FTEs. So I'd have to double check that. But yeah, will you send me the specific?
Yeah, we can go through that offline. All right. Thank you.
All right. We will continue this public hearing. Motion to continue?
Motion.
Motion by Counsel Belchess, second by Counsel Munson. Any discussion of the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. This public hearing is continued. We will now open a public hearing. And this public hearing is to appropriate $49,860 for the replacement of the power pedal, pedestals for the boat slips at the town marina or take any other action relative there too. This public hearing is now open. Is there any discussion on this? The town manager could just give us a brief summary of this?
This came from Power Master. It's a device they have down there. He said he needed their power master, kind of power pedestal.
It's where boats plug in. They have power.
Yeah, yeah. This is the money that we needed for the, there was a, a major electrical upgrade. I just didn't realize what the former name was, but we wanted to do all of them across the board down there. They were all corroding, you know, water penetration, things like that. So we weren't ocean compliant. We weren't complying with the electrical code. So this money is, we put it out to bid. This is to fund that and make it, you know, make those necessary repairs.
Okay. And I know the finance committee did meet on this. Any, and what came out of finance?
So, yeah, we met on this. We came up with a unanimous positive recommendation.
Okay. Any other questions on this? Seeing none, we will close that public hearing. We will open up another public hearing to appropriate $43,800 from free cash to fund, to assist in closing out fiscal year '23 or take any other action relative there too. We will open that up for questions. I will ask Counselor Fusillo.
Yeah. So these are unpaid bills, things we need to do to close out the year. It was given a unanimous positive recommendation by the finance committee. That was about it. Yeah.
And these are typical year-end closeouts. This is nothing out of the ordinary. Any questions on this public hearing? Seeing none, we will close that public hearing. We will now open up a public hearing to appropriate from retained earnings in water and saw the amount of $500,000 and transfer it to the water saw capital stabilization fund or take any other action relative there too. Counselor Fusillo?
So this was just, you know, moving money around. Town manager, correct me if I'm wrong, but it was to, you know, free up money for the council before the certified free cash is available, correct?
Correct.
Correct.
DPW Director Callow, if you have anything on this?
Sorry?
I'm sorry. This is on the $500,000 retained earnings from the waterways fund, water saw fund, to transfer it to water saw capital stabilization fund?
I'm in favor.
Yeah.
Yeah. And it was given a unanimous positive recommendation by the finance committee.
All right. Any questions? We will close that public hearing. We will open up another public hearing to appropriate $62,619 from capital stabilization fund to the police vehicles capital project account for the purpose of a police cruiser, which based on current market conditions, has an approximately one-year wait period for delivery. Now, this is, so public hearing is open. This is something that we've tried to do over the past several years to maintain the fleet, maintain it in good standing and go to a more greener fleet also. Counselor Fusillo?
Yeah, along the same lines as that. You know, it's just a long wait period. We want to make sure that this gets in as soon as possible. It was given a unanimous positive recommendation by the finance committee. And, yeah.
Any other comments on this?
I would support this. I know what we, prior, I, you know, me arriving here, you know, we had a year where we skipped police cruisers. We're starting to see the impacts of that now. I mean, the cruisers are on the road 24/7. You know, we're started, we've got a few down. So really, you know, this long lead time to get cruisers is really setting the impact of operations. We're to the point now where, you know, we can actually, you know, if we were able to get this one, you know, and then we get the one funded in the capital plan, we're going to do one hybrid and then one gas, just to try to get one in the queue a little quicker. So that was the plan because we can get the gas within eight weeks rather than have to wait the whole year. So that's the plan. And this will get us back to where we are. The one that we ordered a year ago, the hybrid is just hitting the assembly line now. So we may not see that till the fall. And then we can get this gas one that'll help us keep us in queue and keep the vehicles up to stock. So I would highly recommend that council approve this if possible.
Counsel Flacke?
Do we have, thank you, Council President. Do we have charging stations for the police department?
The hybrid is, doesn't require a charging station. It's just it turns off and it runs on electric when it's idling and things like that. So it's just kind of better fuel efficiency and better things where it's not fully electric.
That's what I'm going to buy.
Or, not there yet, yeah.
Counsel Belchess?
Thank you. So are we going to look for a gas vehicle instead of the hybrid?
Right now, if we just get approval, we'll get the gas from right away. It'll probably be a little less than what we're allowing for. We have to wait to get the final numbers. And obviously, we won't spend what we need, but that's the allotment we're asking for.
Okay. That's what I was going to ask, if it would change the amount.
And we do have a hybrid on order that's
Current, we do have a hybrid coming in. And then if we get the capital, we'll order another hybrid.
Another hybrid that will come in.
And then next year will allow us to stay up with vehicles and minimize maintenance costs.
Any other questions? Seeing none, we will close that public hearing. And why don't we open another? We will open another public hearing to vote to appropriate certified free cash as listed below. So this is to take $200,000 out of free cash and put $100,000 towards compensated absences reserve fund and $100,000 towards the OPEB trust fund. So that public hearing is open. Counsel Fusillo?
Yeah, this is something that we felt was also necessary. It was given a positive, unanimous positive recommendation. It's putting money into the OPEB trust fund. And I think it's, you know, overall great thing.
I do have reservations on, on the amount of this, which I think we could get into after. But I, I, I will say that, you know, Matt and his FinCom report, the recommendation that they made, there, there was a, a $25,000 contribution from fiscal '23's, fiscal '24's budget going to OPEB, which they've reduced to zero to fund another line item. That's not to say that the fiscal '24 budget doesn't show any contribution to OPEB through the enterprise funds. There's a roughly $54,000 contribution. Just to let everybody know, OPEB is very hard to understand for some, right? It's other benefits, post-employment benefits, right? So other benefits that do not include a pension, basically. And, you know, every town has an incredibly high liability. Just for numbers, our liability as of last year was 125 million. This year, with the calculation change, it's 100 million. So it's something that needs to show progress towards, right? And we're, we're doing that. And as I think the finance commission reported, I, I think a goal that we have is to use, we're, we're, we're in very good shape in our, funding our pension plan. And we should be fully funded in a couple of years. And the majority of that money will probably be going towards OPEB. I, I think this is good. I think if we're borrowing money for whatever reason, it shows that we're making a payment. And the other fund, we had, we had funded that with $25,000, I think, in the fiscal '23 budget. And I think that's something that we need. I, I don't know if we need it in that amount. And I'm looking at a, a couple of other things, a couple of private ways that I think we should address immediately. But I know it did come out, and, and I apologize, I didn't attend the finance committee meeting last Wednesday. But I think that's something that needs to be discussed a little further. But that, those are just my comments on it. I'll have a more detailed plan as we move on. But Counsel Munson?
On that same note, I think what Matt was alluding to was taking money from OPEB and then moving it towards a part-time freelance employee to actually generate more grant writing and more grants. If I'm not mistaken, though, and I like the idea of being, you know, growth-minded and generating revenue as opposed to always socking some away. Sometimes it's a net positive to be aggressive. And my question would be, wouldn't it be more fruitful to get a freelance research specialist that could actually, that has a great knowledge of all the different federal and state grants that we could tie in with other municipalities? So as Joe said earlier, punch above our weight. Is that something that this, this motion has anything to do with? Or is that money, the $100,000?
I think the finance commission recommendation is a good recommendation. I'm just saying that I don't want people to think that because that wipes out the $25,000 contribution we were making in the fiscal '24 budget to OPEB. I want people to understand that we are still, as a town, making a contribution through OPEB, through the enterprise funds. The motion is a good motion. I believe it's a good motion. And I think it's good that, since we have some free cash, we should put some money towards OPEB. It's always good to show that we're committed to doing that. I just think that the amount is off.
High.
We're already putting money towards OPEB. The motion has zero to do with this. The motion coming out of FinCom has nothing to do with this motion.
Okay.
Any other questions on this public hearing? Counselor, Vice President?
Just one other item. This was, the two hundred thousand was split, a hundred thousand OPEB and then a hundred to unfunded liabilities, which is...
Well, it's compensated absence reserve fund.
I just wanna make sure that, yeah, so it's...
Yeah, it's a hundred and a hundred. That, asking, the request is two hundred thousand, a hundred to go into a fund. You know, we want to make sure that we're, we have appropriate financial coverage in funds if anything happens to come up, which, you know, we started last year, which we never had. And we, we started last year in front of the twenty-five thousand. And this is trying to more, you know, come to a, a realization that we're in a good position with that account, that during a particular year, we might not be looking to grab money from something else. I think the thought is really good. I just think the amount might be off a little bit, but we could vet it out after.
Yeah, and, and, you know, not to speak for the committee, but we, we passed this unanimously, but I think just, given that those are longer-term liabilities, both OPEB and the, the fund that we had just referenced, I mean, I think, you know, we opened it here. What other sort of...
Yeah, I think as we get into it, I think even the manager might agree that these amounts might be able to be tweaked a little bit, and he would be happy with it. But, you know, it's, it's not something we, we have to do right now, and, and I think it's important to see, you know, like anything else, if you're making a motion on the budget, you want to also be able to see, well, what you planned, what you thought with that money. And, and I do have a thought that I'll get into later. Council Belcher?
Thank you. I just wanna say that I think that these are important things to fund, but if there are immediate needs, that I think reducing these dollar amounts is, is okay as well.
Yeah. And again, this is just a public hearing. We'll get into it, if not tonight, at a, at a subsequent meeting, but... Any further questions on this public hearing? All right, let's close that public hearing. And now we have a public hearing. We will open up a public hearing to facilitate the June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-three closing of the twenty-twenty-three fiscal year or take any other action relative there, too. These are a bunch of funding sources and funding destinations. This is taking interdepartmental money and moving it to another line to make sure we're level and even. And this, the total amount is two hundred and eighty-six thousand four hundred ninety-two dollars and fifty-three cents. So it's coming from some personnel lines going to other personnel lines and such. Council Fusillo?
Yeah, this was, like you said, just moving around money. We, it was given a unanimous positive recommendation by the finance committee.
Any other discussion on this? Any other calls from Zoom? No? Seeing none, we will close that public hearing, and that concludes the public hearings for this evening. Public comment, first round. As we're, before Mr. Dowd speaks, I just, I do want to recognize schoolwoman Schwoop, who's in the audience, who was very helpful on the school committee in terms of budget discussions and such. And I want to thank her for taking the time tonight to come to listen to our budget discussions. Mr. Dowd? Mr. Dowd, you are up.
Thanks for waking me up. I have some notes here, so two or three...
Okay.
I hope we're done with the Bill Schmidt's rendition of the birds and the bees. Who would have thought that it would go on for months and months about the birds and the bees? It was very painful. As far as the, we could be discussing a bus route or something here.
We are later on.
Okay. It was discussed years ago that somebody wanted to change the bus route to benefit themselves. A lot of people on Winter Street in the neighborhood were firmly against it. It was discussed widely. Part of the discussion was that Wall Street was not suitable for a bus route, and that was determined by a previous council. But down on Wall Street today, there were cars parked on both sides between Lincoln and Foley. And the road gets very narrow when there's parking on both sides, especially if it's gonna be, buses coming from one end and coming from the opposite end. So it was deemed inappropriate and, and, you know, somebody could get hurt down there in, in a previous council. So the town manager, Mr. Marino, thinks it's, it's a suitable option for the bus route at this point. So I don't know how this all transpired without anybody from the public being invited to a public meeting concerning moving the bus. Many people up here in the George Street, Water Street, Bone Street are gonna add a couple of hundred yards to their walk if, if the bus doesn't come up to the top of the hill here, and with forty percent of the day is being inclement weather in, in this area, especially in the wintertime, it's gonna make things very difficult for people to get to and from, for you to install the bus. So I'm hoping that type of information is spoken about tonight. Maybe we should eliminate the bus. Many communities around the world are eliminating bus routes. There are many different options. You know, we have the Hoss and Buggy, we have the Rover, we have the, you know, the whole bit. So it's, it's changed drastically in the last hundred thirty years transportation. Maybe we don't need buses anymore. Some of the options, you can look them up yourselves, Lyft, Transit, you can start that type of program. There's one, and there's many, many programs. There's many ways to do it. There's many ways to finance this type of transportation. One of the Uber-like service, it has been a big hit in the towns, populations of fifty thousand or so. It's all over the internet. Many, many options to use. One of them is in, once in North Carolina, population fifty-five thousand. And it was a big hit. You can start an enterprise fund. Maybe you can get subsidized by the, by the state or the, or the T for this type of program. If everybody had a, if it was a citizen of, of Winter, if had a card subsidized by either the town or the state or somebody, or someone, you know, someone's gonna raise money. You might see the businesses do a lot better if you could get transportation from the beach area to the center and get down to the center and spend some of your money. In this service here, I think it's called, I don't know what it's called, there's hundreds of them out there. So maybe it's time to change the modes of transportation in Winter, not anyplace else, just in Winter. We're only concerned about Winter. Finance it through an enterprise fund, finance it through the state, maybe the T, you know, if we're not gonna, the MBTA wants to eliminate the, the service to Point Shirley. I don't blame them. I follow the buses down at Point Shirley, four people a night, you know, from four o'clock to midnight. I've asked the bus driver, it's only people, four. And, and I see people getting off the bus over here. I monitored that for a while, and there's not many people taking the T, especially in, in inclement weather. People see inclement weather, and they say, I'm gonna take a home day for work. So it could possibly work out. As far as new revenue is concerned, now, there was talk here tonight about new revenue, may, and has. Obviously, everybody's seen the, the for sale sign on the Bank of America. And bids are due on July the eleventh. I'm not so sure of the process, but I have a friend with the Bank of America. I'm gonna ask him about it. If a person has to bid on this piece of property, that person or entity is gonna wanna get the most out of the piece of property, it's just park. It's a big piece of property, and with the new ordinance that were passed in some, some nights ago, I forget what day it was. But I remember it was the middle of the night, so nobody really knew about the consequences. But we're gonna find out about the consequences when this building goes up for sale and sold to somebody that possibly wants to put a housing complex there on the sidewalk, forty-eight feet high, with no provision for parking. So this is all gonna come about in a very short period of time. I hope people pay good attention to what's gonna happen with this piece of property and see how it's gonna, you know, have an effect on the people living in the area. We have a little problem with the people at the Somerset. The dumpsters are on the sidewalk tonight. The people come up with their dogs, they go over to the middle of the park over here and ruin that lawn, you know, because it's a pet-friendly building. If it was really a pet-friendly building, they would have a service inside their property for their pets. So, so it's not a very pet-friendly building. So I hope someone's taken into account there to change something down there. So you spend fifteen million dollars on the center to make a nice place to sit and congregate, and it's covered in, they come up to it a time to do their business on that lawn down there. I don't know why anybody hasn't taken account of that. Why, why aren't there signs down there that say, "Don't ruin our green space," something like that? It's, it's unnerving. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jack. Any other public comment? Anybody on Zoom?
Can you state your name and number, please?
Anyone on Zoom, wish to be heard?
Hello?
Hello, how are you?
Hi. This is Peg Roberts. I'm down the point.
Yes, how are you?
Ten bills, three precincts, five. Good.
Good. What can we do for you? State your comment, please.
Hi. Hi, um, I have, you know, down, down the point here, we're inundated with the planes from runway nine.
Yes. If you could shut your volume on your TV down, maybe...
And they're every, you know, they're, they're less than a minute apart. Okay. They're less than a minute apart from runway nine, and when there's an east wind or a northeast wind, which is quite frequent in the summer. And I, I don't know what we're getting from Massport for, for any mitigation. And, and now they say that, that with the, the improvements they're gonna be making to runway, I guess it's fifteen, that we're gonna have more traffic. And it, I mean, it's really unbelievable. And I don't understand why we can't get something from Massport to, to mitigate our discomfort here. I mean, I have neighbors that, and myself, who are, who are very disturbed by this. I mean, it's constant, and it's, it's loud, and it's frequently from five in the morning until after midnight. And I, I think the point is being left out. I mean, they're not gonna have bus service here, and they're, they're using the, the sound contours from twenty-twenty, when there were no planes. So I'm just voicing my concern. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and we do hear your concerns. I know we had, Massport was in here, I think, the last meeting, discussing some of their plans for the summer. And they are, they have been good neighbors to us in a lot of ways. They do pay a pilot sum to the town every year, but not that that makes your concerns any easier to, to take. We will pass your concerns on to Massport and try to get some answers to you as to, but, you know, as, as I know, that there's limited runway access and limited availability depending on the winds, but we will pass on your concerns, concerns to Massport. Thank you again for your comment.
Okay, because it is over sixty-five DNLs, and, and that is, that does seem to be not, I mean, it, it, over sixty-five DNLs is not compatible with residential use. And, and so it makes me disappointed, because they're cutting off bus service here, and they're, they're really not doing anything for sound mitigation. And if it's, if the point is incompatible with residential use, does that mean that we're gonna lose the point to the airport? Thank you.
Thank you. We will pass on your concerns, and I, I feel pretty comfortable that we will not lose the point to Massport, but we will do everything we can to try to make it a, a better situation for you. Any other questions?
Karen Travis?
Karen?
You're on mute, Karen.
Mr. President, I apologize. I guess I'm not doing something right tonight, because Denise said she couldn't see my hand up. I do apologize. First of all, I want to commend Matt Bushwitz for his outstanding job. I don't think people realize how much work he actually puts into, not only the land, but that power presentation. That is very, very time-consuming. I have a couple of comments on the public hearings, and I guess my hand wasn't out. I don't know what I did wrong. First of all, on that waterways fund, Robbie explained that night, I, I didn't intend that meeting, that the, right now, the, the current slip fee does include whatever the cost is of hooking up to that electricity, but they will benefit if the, if the boats choose to add something else, like a refrigerator, rear conditioner, or something like that. So that does benefit ourselves. And also, I just had a question. I think the town manager did speak on this a little bit, but I'm a little bit confused on the police vehicles. Are they all going to be hybrid, or are you going to alternate between the hybrid and the gas?
We are alternating, Karen, and, you know, the hybrids take a year timeframe right now, right, with supply chain and such. And the hi, and the gas vehicles, we are able to get within an eight-week period. So we are alternating.
Okay, 'cause I don't know how many of you know this, but my son did this for the state police for many, many years. And when you go out to order two hundred vehicles that are half-hybrid and half-gas, you go to the top of the line, or right to the top of the list, I should say. Of course, we went to order one vehicle, you go to the bottom.
I don't see that changing in the near future.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Karen. Any other comments? All right. Correspondence, Denise?
I did receive none. I have none written.
All right. Okay, let's move on to committee reports. Finance?
So Finance Committee met on Wednesday, was it Wednesday last week? Wednesday last week. There was a handful of motions to cover, I believe eight of them. Largely, a lot of them were moving money around. All of the motions were given positive recommendations after careful consideration and speaking with Robbie. Robbie Powers was there for the meeting as well. We felt comfortable... We felt comfortable giving all of these motions positive recommendations. And also, I'd like to give a little plug to Hannah and Councilor Giro, well, Councilor Belcher and Councilor Giro for covering in my absence, so I thank them as well.
All right, thank you. And we did go over most of your motions during public hearings, and we will see you again in old business.
Yep.
Vice President Giro, rules and audits.
Yes, rules and audits also met last Wednesday, May thirty-first, in attendance from the committee, where myself and Councilor Munson also in attendance was Councilor Belcher in an ex officio capacity. The discussion for the evening was Council Rule Two A, which sets the dates and meeting times of our regularly scheduled town council meetings. There was a pretty healthy discussion on this and the consideration of whether or not to push our meetings an hour earlier from starting at seven PM to six PM. Ultimately, the committee decided to pass a recommendation or a motion to preserve Council Rule Two A as currently written, which is as follows. The Winter Town Council meeting shall be held on the first and third Tuesday of each month at seven PM, and at such other times deemed necessary as authorized by Section two dash six, see Roman at two of the Winter Town Charter. The reason for preserving it as such just really had a lot to do with making these meetings as easy for both the participants and also the members of the public to view and take part in it if they so choose. You know, just a regular or a traditional work schedule, whatever have you, you know, nine-to-five per se, having enough time on the front end to, you know, fulfill domestic obligations before then heading to a meeting, whether you're a member of the public or a council member. That seemed a little bit more palatable rather than kind of losing the time on the front end and also on the back end. As we know, sometimes these meetings run a little bit late into the evening. So we can get, I think this comes up again in old business, but that's our committee report.
Very good. And public safety?
Public safety did not meet despite quite a bit of trying. Because of travel and business obligations, we weren't able to get together. We'll keep trying.
We appreciate the effort. School Department report. School Committee did meet last evening. Most of the discussion, a lot of the discussion and what I'm going to give a report on surrounded graduation last Friday and graduation week in general. You know, it's an exciting time of year for these kids, and it's an exciting time of year for the parents, but, I mean, it's an exciting time of year for me. I just enjoy it, and it's amazing to watch these kids grow up. And congratulations to Councilor Munson on his daughter and her graduation.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
But I do want to, you know, I want to take some time to thank Matt Crombie, Principal of the High School, Matt Sorino, Athletic Director, and Superintendent Howard, and the entire staff for the job they did in preparing and not only in preparing the field, but to have alternate plans in place if needed. You know, it's, it's an amazing event the whole week with their whole pomp and circumstance through proms and such, but, you know, one of the things they do that was established not too long ago was the walkthrough from the, through the other schools. And this was something, I think, that was brought up maybe eight or nine years ago when we were transitioning from one school to another and to try to make something a little more palatable for the kids who had to go through this whole transition process. And it just started an incredible tradition where these high school seniors get to go back to the Gorman Fort Banks and to the Arthur T. Cummings. It's just amazing. And as much fun as it is for them, I know the teachers enjoy it even more, and the kids in the schools enjoy it, and to see that that's going to be them in a short period of time. But, you know, the other amazing thing is that we graduated roughly a hundred and thirty odd kids, and there was over three hundred and fifty thousand dollars awarded in scholarships. And, you know, a lot of that is from small businesses and clubs that have just done it for years and years and years, and they should be commended for their service and for what they do. And, you know, the vast majority of this money comes from the Paul and Norma Facella Memorial Scholarship Fund. And, you know, a lot of people hear about the Facella scholarships, but they don't really understand the story. And I would just like to take a minute to say, to give a little background, that, you know, Paul served in the Navy during World War II. He was hard worker as a building contractor. Norma helped others in the neighborhood. They were good neighbors and caring people. They saved their money and learned to, and learned the world through various trips abroad. For sixty years, they shared a devoted life together and a deep concern for the young people in Winthrop. Paul passed in 2014, roughly two years after Norma. And through their careful financial planning and modest lifestyle, they produced a sizable estate. And because they never had children of their own, their legacy now will build a future for students graduating Winthrop High School. Their example of careful financial planning and selfless generosity has much to offer the community as well as the larger culture. They model the importance of giving back to community to improve lives of the next generation. And these scholarships are awarded to high school seniors who will be attending his or her first year in college in the fall and who also demonstrate good character, good scholastic record, extracurricular activities, involvement in the community work. So, you know, the way it's set up, they, they left a sizable amount of money to the Winthrop schools, and, you know, it's very carefully planned, and basically, the interest earned on that money is given out every year. And a small portion of it is used to try to offset the cost of AP classes and tests that these kids have to take. But there's roughly a quarter of a million dollars given out a year, and, you know, it's given out, and might be fifteen scholarships ranging from ten thousand to twenty-five thousand, and it's, it's just an incredible, incredible thing that they did, an incredible thing that all the people that donate scholarships in this town do, to give out, you know, over a third of a million of a dollars is just incredible in a small town like this. And to just single out a couple of the seniors, you know, we had Caitlin Barry, Caitlin Barry apologized, sang a national anthem and did an incredible job. And then Delia Paco was the Facella tutorian, who gave a remarkable speech. And Ben Prue, the Valedictorian, was just amazing to listen to him. He just spoke so eloquently and had such a great message. He was fantastic. And then, as the rains started to begin to come, we had the class president, Mia Norris, who just held her composure completely, did a fantastic job in her speech, got through it as the skies were opening up. But I, you know, give them all the kudos in the world. Congratulations to the whole class, and it was just a great event. So that is my school department report, and we will move on to the town manager report.
Hey, Vice President, just to remind everybody, we have electronics recycling event this Saturday, June tenth, the parking recreation parking lot from nine to two. They're big, get rid of computers, laptops, vacuum cleaners, all sorts of appliances, washing machines. There's varying prices to get rid of them, sets as low as five dollars, up to forty dollars for projection TVs and things like that, but you can get rid of large refrigerators for thirty dollars, ride-on lawn mowers, things like that. We're also looking for any sort of donations with regard to cell phones and any sort of bicycles in any condition. They're asking for that as well. Right now, from nine to two, cash is heard, and they will accept checks over thirty dollars. So just want to remind everybody about that. I did have a good meeting with our, the attorney general of Comcast contract and Comcast. We're getting close to finalizing that contract to have, you know, for review with council, and we'll have everybody in to review that at that point. We're down to the final points now with that. We had a meeting in the last couple of weeks. We did record the plans based on the council vote on the notice of takings for the Rhyer Street Tip Project. We recorded the seven-page milars and also the notice of taking, now the registry deeds. The letters went out the next week, starting on the twelfth and thirteenth. They can come in and start picking up their checks. Several more phone calls, some more clarification would be getting in the office, but we're getting close on that. There's a little more requirements that we have to do with regard to property affidavits and diaries and things like that that Mass GOT requires, but we're finalizing those documents. A lot of time and effort's going into that, but it's going to be worth it in the end. And I want to thank everybody that showed up at the flag-raising event yesterday. We had the three-flag pole set up and raised the pride flag based on the proclamation of the council, so thank you for that. We'll also be, the Pride Potluck, Senator Edwards is scheduling, is the seventeenth, Saturday, from four to seven, so that'll be going on. Keep an eye out for more information on that. And also, we'll be flying the Juneteenth flag in accordance with the proclamation from the council on June nineteenth. And a similar ceremony, we'll be raising that flag nine AM on Monday, the nineteenth of the morning. And then go from there, and I think that's all I have. That was been, most of what's been going on. So we did, as we talked about, that we did finally sign the final MOA. I've been waiting to report that on the police patrolman and sergeant's contract, so we are all set with the new contracts now. Got the final MOA signed, so that's ready to go. So we are. All youth labor contracts, the next one up will be fire department. They expire at the end of fiscal year '24, so this coming October, we'll start negotiating with them, but then everybody else ended on June thirtieth, 2025. I haven't certainly opened up questions.
And I will say that Memorial Day services were extremely well-attended and just fantastic event. So thanks to town for that. Thank Phil Ronan also, and Richard Honan, who is just always to be thanked for his service to the town, but it's just a great event. It really is.
Can I do one more thing, Vice President? Just that I was able to, one of the things we did also in the last two weeks is Wendy Page and I went over to, you know, WCAT, we recorded a show, an update on regards to the changes coming to the trash rules, starting on July first, reviewed all that. There was also a flyer that went out that people got, reminding them that, you know, you could allow, to put out one recycling container, one trash container, and then obviously need to buy bags for anything over that and have it in a proof container with a lid. So keep an eye out for more information on that. Even though it's going to affect seven-one with the way the Fourth of July holiday falls, you know, you'll get a little reprieve for the first week because of the holiday week, so starting that following Monday, seven, is when the actual strict rule will go into place where if it's something outside of a barrel, sitting in a bag, you know, Capitol won't be picking it up, you know, and then we'll have some extra enforcement time onboard as we do the education campaign and try to get people used to the new process. So, you know, we expect some people will be, you know, upset, and there'll be some pushback, but, you know, in July and August, it'll be our time to educate people and start the new process. So, but we want to get this word out. These flyers got mailed out to everybody. There'll be more in the town manager blog, and, you know, we just, social media will be getting the word out about the new trash rules, so I just wanted to remind everybody about that.
A couple of things, and I'll open up to the council. There's a small parcel that we had discussed several months ago, or even longer ago, on fifteen seventeen Walden Street, right?
Yep.
I think it's like a seven-hundred-square-foot parcel, triangle piece of parcel, that I think we gave the approval to go ahead on. Just want to continue that ball rolling on that.
Yep, we got documentation on that, and we're going to try to get a purchase and sale for that.
And as well, and I mentioned this at the last meeting, and just through the Memorials Committee, we're hoping to have a plaque for Bobby Gillis done at the E.B. Newton School. Now, as, and people know, you talked about the flag ceremony, which was great, and just to let people understand that those aren't the official poles. That was something that you did to make sure that we had them up in time, but there are commercial-grade poles going in. It's going to be, it's going to look, you know, a little nicer, let's say, whatever.
It's going to be landscape better around there.
It's going to be better landscaped, and part of that landscape, and we'd like to see a plaque for Bobby there, similar to the plaque that was dedicated Memorial Day, which was incredibly nice and well-done for Mr. Reed. So if we could send that to Memorials and the fifteen seventeen Walden Street and open it up for questions for the town manager, Mr., well, mister, but Councilor Ella.
Just a reminder, you were going to get, as you said, end of May, early June, two things. One was a draft of a proposed new approach to transit lodging ordinance to sort of start filtering through and think about that. And connected to that was, I don't know if you're going to have a draft RFP or something to go to the enforcement enterprises that are out there that we might end up retaining to enforce transit lodging.
Yes, we'll have a page on both. I met with Karen Conroy today about that.
Can we do that on the twenty-seventh? Because next week is budget.
Yep, shooting for the twenty-seventh. Fine-tuning some stuff. If it's not the twenty-seventh, it would be, but we'll have a draft anyway ready, and then maybe a larger discussion on the eighteenth, but we're shooting for that time.
Okay. Yeah, even if you can really release a draft.
Yep, that's what we're working on.
Council. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Questions for the town manager, Council Flockhart?
Thank you, Council President. These flyers, did they get mailed to the residents?
Yes, they did.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I received one.
Made sure of that. We'll get it.
Any other questions?
Seeing.
Like the bag is.
Seeing them.
I'm sorry, I think, Vice President.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Just as far as the trash enforcement and the bags go, Council Flockhart mentioned that those did go out, but where can folks buy bags? And is that all?
We'll have that list out shortly, but before the seven-one, even if the store's on all the place, you'll be able to buy them at the DPW and Town Hall in the beginning, but we're going to eventually farm that out to the retail establishments. But the company we hired to buy the bag from is finalizing that deal right now, so we'll have that list shortly.
Okay, so definitely at DPW and then definitely.
And Town Hall.
At Town Hall, yep. And then.
We don't want to miss the windows, so.
Right, and then at some retails in Town to be, play it to be named later.
Correct. Yep, cool.
Councilor Munson, then back to.
There was a letter submitted proposing that the Ingleside Tennis Courts be named in honor of former Principal John Domenico, and I just wanted to know where that was in the process.
It's going to be going on an agenda in the future. I mean, not next meeting, the meeting after.
Wonderful, thank you.
Council Flockhart.
The barrels or whatever they're called for the textiles are labeled in a confusing way.
Okay.
I went out to dispose of my textiles and could not find these things. I went to the landing, and then I went out to DPW, and I spoke to somebody there, and they directed me. These things say clothes. They don't say textiles. And people donate clothes to the Salvation Army or, you know, someplace else. It seems to me that they should say textiles, and what we're trying to do is get people to dump their textiles there.
Okay, I'll talk to Wendy about that and see if we can do something better.
I know that clothes are the primary textile, but all of mine were not.
Okay. I'll talk to Wendy about that. Thank you.
All right. Moving on, CDIC has not met since our last meeting. I believe they're meeting next Wednesday. Yes, next Wednesday. All right, we're almost halfway through the agenda. Old business, discussed, TSAC Locust Street. So this is something, I did have some correspondence with a few people.
Through this discussion.
This is a, you know, I think in 2020, this came before us, there were a couple items that came before us, a couple different streets, and Locust Street was one of them, and we got recommendations from TSAC. I thought they were a little convoluted, but they, you know, the council never acted on them, basically. And I did have a few emails from people that would like it to be looked at again, addressed, and I think it's worthy to be looked at again. So what I've asked for is that Chief DeLante come to our next meeting and give us an explanation as to what the recommendation was to, because a lot of people weren't even on the council at that stage. And to get a better representation, if people want to take a walk, I know I've taken a walk down the street to look at it. I encourage councilors to do that. So I'm hoping at a subsequent meeting, we're going to get a discussion which will give us the details as to what was recommended out of TSAC. And then we can either ask for a better, a different recommendation or act on it instead of, you know, putting it down the line for another council to deal with. So I appreciate the correspondence. I think, you know, I think things we have to look at now is we have the tip project going on and see the effects of that. And sometimes when you, when you look at traffic, especially in that area, after next week, when school's out, it's like, oh, everything's great, but it's not necessarily the case. So I definitely think it's something very worthy to be taking a look at again, get an explanation from TSAC as to what their recommendations were, and try to come to a resolution on it or ask for further clarification. But, so that, we'll be getting an update for that. I continued it under old business because it's something that's been way in the past. Councilor Ella.
I appreciate you sort of bringing this back to the fore. Some subset of that is just plain old enforcement, and we've got to do a better job. I mean, it's a town-wide problem with people parking right up against intersections and driveways and all of that, so I want to make sure we talk about enforcement and how to get better enforcement around that stuff. First, educate. First, education, and then technique.
All right, we'll move on. Um, with the beach access points, we continue to have, uh, myself and the town manager have reached out. I know the town managers reached out to the commissioner of the D.C.R., um, and had a conversation. I know I've reached out to a contact that we've got through, Representative Turco. Um, and we are adamant about having a set of stairs there for the summer. So, I hope to have not talked to the town manager since this conversation with the commissioner. So, we hope to have more information on this. It will stay on here. Um, I've made a commitment to try to get, and I think the council is in agreement with this, to try to get access at that location. There never would have been a, a hole in the wall there if they didn't think access was a good idea. So, uh, it's, it's a service to the towns' members, and, uh, we will continue to fight for that. MBTA, um, effective July second, there is going to be a change to the current bus stop situation. And with our respect to Mr. Dowd's comments earlier, there, there have been studies going back and forth. Uh, this is not a council call, this is a town manager's call, but I do support it. I believe that, um, you know, we've seen, unfortunately, um, something that can, that can happen, that has happened on Herman Street. And, um, I know, just in the past couple of weeks, driving to Town Hall and such, there, there is almost a situation every day where you have to back up. Is Walden Street the perfect solution? No, nothing's perfect. Um, you know, the things that we discussed right away with Walden Street, has a potential, there's flooding gonna be four, five, six, seven times a year. Um, will it be as an issue with a bus than a car? I don't know, but it's something that we'll have to look at. Um, the width of the street is, there is parking on both sides on Walden Street. Not as much parking during the day, but on school pickups and such, there are parking use. The width of the street on Walden is thirty-six feet, the width of the street on Herman is twenty-five. Um, the turning, the turning radiuses on each end of the street is much better, we've been told, on Walden. Um, and one of the items which is also next on the agenda that I wanted to discuss too is, um, you know, the access to, uh, town manager will talk a little bit about this also, but the, the bus stops will be, my understanding, uh, there will be a bus stop at the crosswalk, uh, on Walden Street where the basketball courts are. There's a crosswalk, there's a flashing sign for crosswalks. There'll be a, a, a bus stop at the corner of Lincoln and Pauline, on the, you know, tennis court side of Lincoln and Pauline, let's say. And then there will be bus stops to mimic the bus stops that are on, um, you know, if you look at Herman Street, there's bus stops, signs are on Main Street. But on the, the T-calls, and, and Phil would know more than I, but, and I don't understand this, but the T-calls, the outbound actually coming into Wentworth, because this is how they refer to it as us, and the inbound is actually going out of Wentworth. But on the inbound side of going out of Wentworth, the bus is stopping on the, on Main Street. The in, the outbound coming into Wentworth, the bus stop is on Main Street, but they actually stop after the turn on Herman. And that's something that I think the bus drivers just did on their own for the most part. But, uh, the bus stops here will be at the top of Main Street. You know, this is, I, I don't think the town manager agreed with this decision lightly either. I mean, it was walked, it was walked with the police chief, it was walked with the DPW director. Um, I think it's very hard to argue that it doesn't seem to be a safer route. If we are all wrong, we change it back. But we won't know unless we try. This has come up to the council, I believe, ten or eleven years ago, uh, and it did not pass, to Mr. Dowd's point. Um, I, I just feel the incidents that we've had, especially over the past year, and just the congestion in general, um, warrants this type of change. So, I'll, I'll open it up to the council, and I'll also ask the town manager to speak on it if he chooses. Town man, uh, council, mister, Consulayla, again?
I think it's absolutely sensible to try this, um, because of the restrictions on, on Herman Street. Uh, but I think Jack's point about, uh, people being further away from the houses is a good point, particularly around inclement weather. I think it's critical for us to marry this with bus shelters.
We did ask the T also for that, have not got, uh, we have not got a response back, but that was one of the things that we made sure.
One of the concerns is gonna be, um, the sidewalk width to have both the bus shelter and the ability to have ADA compliant passing by. So, we may need to modify curb lines.
We did take care of that too, when we looked at the bus stops.
Yeah, we talked about that, we laid that out. We have the specs for the bus shelter.
Okay. Yeah, so let's, let's put some pressure on the T for the bus shelters, because I, I think that's an excellent point that, um, Mr. Dowd made.
Uh, Vice President Joe.
Yeah, I mean, I think, look, we, we did have a, a major tragedy, um, happen up in this busy intersection up here. And so, I think, you know, we would be remiss if we didn't try to, um, solve that safety issue and, um, you know, learn from potential mistakes and things that happened in the past. But, um, you know, it, it is, uh, you know, the bus stop up here, it, this is a busy area, and for good reason. You have, uh, you know, customers, so to speak, walking into Town Hall, walking into, um, the police department. So, you know, I think we are losing, um, maybe some public access there. But on the same hand, I mean, um, I think it's probably a good thing that we have a couple bus stops along our major public park in town. Um, you know, that's also a heavily trafficked area, and I think it's kinda, I don't know, it's if you're a, you know, a young person wanting to go play basketball, I can take the bus and go shoot around, or go to the park, or whatever it is that you want to do. So, um, yeah, I mean, if it's something that, uh, like Council President said, if we try it and it doesn't work out for whatever reason, then, then we know. But we're not gonna know unless we, we try it, so.
Consul Belcher.
Uh, thank you. How are we pushing this information out to people? Do we know yet? Like, because that's not too far off, it's.
Yep, the MBTA's working on it, and then we're gonna piggyback on their, did it win a marketing campaign? Then we're gonna piggyback on that with our social media website, my blog, um, you know, probably maybe even another WCAT show. I mean, just, I never want to assume what people's medium are and how they get venues, so we try to hit everything and, and get it out there. But we'll be doing that over the next, you know, two, three weeks to get the word out.
I just wouldn't want people waiting for a bus to get to work that never shows up.
Yeah.
All right, and town manager, do you have anything to add?
No, no, I just, I would say, like, during the meetings, we had obviously not a decision completely. We think it's, uh, you know, given the, the straight shot that that street, you know, Walden Street is, it's just a better, uh, route. I think, um, and I will say the MBTA agree with us. I mean, they, you know, were stunned that it was over there. They would have, years ago, preferred to put it on this street. So, I think they, you know, they were in agreement as well, even the engineers at the MBTA.
And they don't make changes lightly.
No, and this was a pretty quick one. They just thought this was gonna be better, yeah.
Consulayla.
I've seen the T in the past put, uh, notices on the bus stops that are about to disappear to advise people as of a certain date they're there. So, you may want to make sure that they do that as well.
Thank you.
Consul Belcher.
Sorry, just one more quick question or comment. Do we know if this information got to the bus network redesign folks at the T? Because you wouldn't want to move it and then have them switch it all around again.
We were pretty adamant with my, with the person from the T that we spoke to, and it wasn't just one person, it was multiple. We will double-check on that.
I'll double-check that, I'm not positive on that, I'll double-check.
They were very detailed-oriented, and it wasn't just like, yeah, sure, that's fine, let's do it. I mean, it was, it was very detailed-oriented.
They're almost excited to make this happen, so.
Thank you.
Vice President.
Sorry, so, so the, there's gonna be a stop at the intersection of Walden and Pauline Street, is that?
Yes.
Okay.
Walden and Lincoln.
And, and as well?
Not at the intersection of Walden and Pauline, no.
Okay.
The Walden and Pauline stops will stay the same. They'll be at CBS and right in front of the rink, kind of thing.
Okay, that's what I said, so one at CBS isn't going anywhere as a hotspot. Okay, that's remaining, the only thing we're doing is moving that one from Metcalfe Square to.
To the, basically, the basketball courts.
Basketball courts, okay.
All right, and moving into the next, um, business is, is, again, public walkways, which are on. And we're looking at more information. We got some great information that Denise found from, from Dave Hubbard, who I trust impeccably with all his record-keeping. Um, to give us a, a complete list, we fail of public walkways and waterway access points. And, and we think there's twenty-eight waterway access points and twenty-three pathways. Um, one of the pathways being, uh, the set of stairs from Walden Street that comes, uh, from Herman Street, that comes down to Short Street, which leads into Walden Street. Um, and that set of stairs has been there since eighteen ninety-eight, from the records I looked at. And, um, it's a set of granite stairs, um, probably eight of them, or whatever. And they're in somewhat disrepair, and that's something that I think, and part of the reason why I'm suggesting on the free cash to offset some of that money, I think that would be a great starting point to address some of these public walkways, uh, especially where that one's going to be utilized more now with people coming from Herman Street down to the bus stop. Um, so that's something I just wanted to maintain on the agenda, but I think it's something that we should take a look at. And when we're getting to that, um, you know, maybe Old Business, or maybe we'll postpone that particular item to, to the next meeting, that that's something we could discuss in lieu of, um, in lieu of putting that complete two-hundred thousand towards those two items. But that's why I had that on there. And we're still working on public walkways, and we're anxious to, um, we're anxious to have public safety meet on these in, in future, and have some future comments on this, and, and to start to look at.
I think it's Public Works that has this.
Public Works, yes. But when, um, when we look at Mr. Hubbard's list, it not only identifies the areas, but it also gives, um, you know, what type of shape each area is in. Now, the list isn't brand-new, but it gives us a really good starting point to try to, you know, priority, prioritize a list and to, and to take a look at it. But I, I do think this would be a really good one to start with.
Yeah.
Consulayla.
Can, can I relay a piece of communications?
Sure.
From a constituent, uh, who said that with the new service on Walden Street, perhaps there could be some steps, and I don't know the geography that well, behind E.B. Newton School, um, School Street down to Walden Street.
There are steps, there are steps, there are curb steps, but there, there is a walkway from the tree right near the parking lot that kind of circles around a little bit, goes down to the tennis, basketball courts, which walk right to the, where the bus stop would be.
Okay, thank you. So, who sent that to me?
All right.
Cleveland doesn't have kids in the comments.
What?
Cleveland.
Update on, what do we have next? Old middle school, so, um, it, it's been seven years, I think, at least. Um, I do have something that I am gonna propose to the council that I've been working on, along with town manager. And, um, you know, just a brief description now, and we'll get into this much more and, and get the thoughts of the councilors. But, um, what we're looking at, uh, is, um, we, we've already said that we're looking at the, we're looking at funding sources now to try to demolish the middle school and the auditorium. Um, and that would begin the process, right? We've been in talks, and, and my thought on that would be, at the future, there would be, there would be now an open space at the top of Waldemar, which would probably be three, two-family houses or such. Um, my thoughts would be that that would be sold as three lots, four lots, whatever it ends up being. And that would kind of finish that neighborhood off. It would give it boundaries, it would finish it off. Um, and then my thought would be that between that and the development that I'm suggesting would be green space. Just more green space, park recreational space, more of an easier access from Ingleside through CBS and into the center. And then, a, as, i-if this plan went to fruition, um, we would then take down, a-as the plan came to its finality, we would take down the gymnasium, and we would enter into a public-private partnership with a group called Edge Sports Group. What Edge Sports Group does, basically, an easy way to explain it, the easiest way is always to read it. But basically, they're, um, you know, they get into, they, well, I'll read it. Edge Sports Group Full Array Service Approach is anchored with it, with their philosophy of community engagement and project sustainability, backed by a proven track record of delivering community best-in-class, family-oriented athletic venues. Um, so they deal with a public-private partnership. And we're going, going to have opportunities to tour a couple facilities. They have ten facilities now, um, that they've entered into either private-public partnerships with, or that they outright have built themselves. Um, what, what I would envision here, after talking to them, would be a facility that would include the, the existing rink. It would have an additional rink, and it would have a field house. The field house, um, it would be a sports community complex, right? And the field house would have tennis courts, pickleball courts, basketball courts, walking tracks for our citizens. Um, the additional rink would have, um, a, a lobby area with your typical sports paraphernalia. It would have a second-floor access point. This facility would also be able to encompass our parks and rec department. It would also be able to have rooms for casa, workout zones and such. Um, our teams, our high school teams, our youth hockey teams, our figure skating association would have preferred times. They would not lose any, you know, any of their times, and they would work with preferable rates. Um, this company would bring in money to the town in terms of taxes. They would also bring in money in terms of, uh, economic stimulus to the center. It would not have any burden on public schools. It would have little burden on public safety. Um, there's always the talk of traffic, which we could talk about all the time. They would, I'm sure they would run tournaments, which would bring in people, bring in venues. So, this is something that, again, it's, it's an idea. It's something that we haven't had, and, and a fully vested idea in, in a long time. Um, I'm trying to get a group together in the near future. We can't have more than four councilors going together to tour a specific facility. Um, you know, once we get out there, we'll ask for feedback. Um, you know, we want to look at, you know, any cost potential to the town and impact on that, tax structure, and how it will impact us positively. You know, how many potential, um, you know, we, we don't want to lose any green space that's there. We want it for recreation, or I think it would be best used for recreational space. Um, and to have this complex, a recreational area that we can be proud of, that can serve the town, serve its citizens, young and old, um, and give us something to be proud of. They are very excited about the possibility of working with Wentworth. I think our location is extremely, um, comforting to them. Their, their main facility right now is in Wellesley. Uh, it was a piece of property that was owned by the Archdiocese, that the Archdiocese sold it to the town of Wellesley. The town of Wellesley entered into a partnership, and they have a facility there that's just incredible. Um, you know, there's more space. They have a facility that includes an Olympic swimming pool, two hockey rinks, multi-purpose court, field house, um, walking tracks, um, you know, all kinds of facilities there. And, um, they also have the Essex Tech School that, um, that we partner with, one of our vocational schools, has a facility that's relatively new that they have a partnership with there. So, um, again, it, it's Edge Sports Group, if anybody cares to take a look at them. Uh, and we will talk about more of this in the future, and I will be asking councilors to take a field trip. And I could provide a sandwich, maybe. But, um, you know, I think, you know, I think it's, it's probably long overdue to, to try to look at something and see if it's feasible and see if it works. But you can't do anything if you don't have an idea, right? We could talk until we're blue in the face about different things, but let's see if something works, and if not, then we move on. Um, but I did want to give an update on that. Uh, we have a lot of old business, which I'll just, uh, give the floor to, uh, Consul Fisillo to start us off with these motions. The first one is forty, forty-nine thousand eight hundred sixty dollars from retained earnings for the Waterways Fund.
Yep, so I move that the town council appropriate from retained earnings in the Waterways Fund the amount of forty-nine thousand eight hundred sixty dollars for the replacement of the power pedestals for the boat slips at the Town Marina, or take any other action there, too.
Right, this motion came out of finance with parts of recommendation, does not require a second, any discussion on the motion. Seeing none, all those in favor, uh, roll call, please.
Consul Honan. Consul Fisillo.
Yes.
Apologize, yes.
Yes.
Consul Muntz.
Yes.
Consul Belcher.
Yes.
Consul DiMarco. Consul Flockhart.
Yes.
Consulayla.
Yes.
Vice President Gigerro.
Yes.
President Luteri.
Yes.
Thank you.
Next motion is for five thousand eight hundred and twenty-four dollars and eight cents for unpaid bills, Consul Fisillo.
I move that the town council vote to authorize unpaid bills of a prior year to be paid from current year. current-year departmental budgets, as noted below, or take any other actions there, too. The total amount equalling $5,824.08.
This motion came out of finance with positive recommendation, does not require a second, any discussion on the motion. Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those may, the ayes have it. Consul Fisillo, $43,800.
Yes. I move that the town council vote to appropriate $43,800 from free cash to the below funds to assist in closing out fiscal year 2023, or take any other action there, too. Once again, this is coming out of free cash of the amount of $43,800, and is going to Financial Year 21 Transport earmark in the amount of $8,800, and it's also going to Pauline Street Revolving Fund at the amount of $35,000. This leaves the free cash balance, if approved, at $334,324.64.
All right, this comes out of finance, what a positive recommendation, does not require a second. Is Robbie still on the call? Do you know?
Robbie is on the call, yeah.
Yes, he is.
Can you just, hi Robbie, just the fiscal 21 Transport earmark, can you just explain that?
Yep, so this was an earmark where the Senator's, I think it was the Senator's office called like the day before the end of the year, told us to do some work. We did the work, then they rolled the funds, they said, so that they, then they gave us another $10,000, so it ended up being $20,000 that they gave us. But then there became an issue with receipts, and they wanted the invoices to be after the first of the year, even though they told us to spend it before the first of the year. So it's been going back and forth for, you know, the better part of two years. So they finally said that there was no way we were going to get the money. Me, Steve, Dick worked on it. We were back and forth with the office of the state over and over, and there was just no way we were going to get this $8,000 back from them. So it went to Paycock Crosswalks in town. You know, we did get $10,000 from them for Crosswalks, this is just additional, and it's just to close it out, because we won't get that money from them.
Again, this did come out of finance with positive recommendation, does not require a second. Any further questions on this? Seeing none, roll call vote, please.
Consul Honan. Consul Fisillo.
Yes.
Consul Munson.
Yes.
Consul Belcher.
Yes.
Consul DiMarco.
Yes.
Consul Flahcat.
Yes.
Consul Ayello.
Yes.
Vice President Ruggiero.
Yes.
President Luteri.
Yes, that is passed. Consul Fisillo, $164.05.
Yes. I move that the town council vote to transfer the small balances and any other interest that may have been, may be posted from the old scholarships funds to the Rona Mail Town Scholarship Fund, or take any other action there, too. These are all scholarships that haven't had contributions in quite some time, and this is just sort of putting them all into one place, which is the Rona Mail Town Scholarship, and it received a positive recommendation.
All right, this did come out of Finance Committee with positive recommendation, does not require a second, any discussion on this motion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those know, the ayes have it. Consul Fisillo, $500,000.
Yes. I move that the town council appropriate from retained earnings in the Water Sewer Fund the amount of $500,000, and transfer it to the Water Sewer Capital Stabilization Fund, or take any other action there, too. The remaining balance, if approved, in the Water Sewer retained earnings would be $873,495.
All right. And one quick question, Robbie?
Yes, sir.
Water Sewer Capital Stabilization Fund balance is 22, so that's before this motion. I go?
Yeah, so before this motion is $22,000 left in there after we appropriated the money for the PRV design earlier this year. So what we're doing here is we're taking $500 out of retained earnings, putting it into the stabilization fund, so that after 7/1, if we need to tap into that money, we are able to.
Right.
Rather than waiting for the retained earnings to be approved by the state, that we can tap into the stabilization fund.
Thank you, Robbie. Came out of finance with positive recommendation, does not require a second, any further discussion on this? Seeing none, roll call vote, please.
Consul Honan.
Yes.
Consul Fisillo.
Yes.
Consul Munson.
Yes.
Consul Belcher.
Yes.
Consul DiMarco.
Yes.
Consul Flahcat.
Yes.
Consul Ayello.
Yes.
Vice President Ruggiero.
Yes.
President Larry.
President Larry?
That's very.
It's only nine o'clock, Denise. President Larry says yes.
That's hilarious.
Consul Fisillo, $62,619,000 Capital Stabilization.
I move that the town council vote to appropriate $62,619 from the Capital Stabilization Fund to the Police Vehicles Capital Project Account for the purchase of a police cruiser, which, based on current market conditions, has an approximate one-year wait period for delivery once ordered, or take any other action there, too. This would, if approved, would take the Capital Stabilization balance to $2,899,201.60.
All right, this came out of finance with positive recommendation, does not require a second, any further discussion on this motion? I do think this is a good idea. I get a little lary when we're talking about vehicles, that we already have one coming in, we have another one on order, and now we're going to go another one. So I get a little nervous about that. And, you know, some of it is supply chain. I just hope we could get to a point where we're ordering one a year, and we get that one, and not that we have like three in transit here. So I get a little concerned about that, but I will support the motion. Any other discussion on the motion? Seeing none, I'll ask for a roll call vote.
Consul Honan.
Yes.
Consul Fisillo.
Yes.
Consul Munson.
Yes.
Consul Belcher.
Yes.
Consul DiMarco.
Yes.
Consul Flahcat.
Yes.
Consul Ayello.
Yes.
Vice President Ruggiero.
Yes.
President Luteri.
Yes, thank you. The next motion, I'm going to ask that we could keep that, send that back to committee and just take a look at it for our next meeting, for the $200,000 from free certified, from free cash to be distributed as two accounts. I'd just like to take another look at that. Thank you. And Consul Fisillo, last one, closeouts, $286,492.53.
Hold on, I'm trying to find that one. Where is that one? You got that one?
I'll just take it that the.
I got it in front of me right there. I move that the town council vote to modify the following general fund budgets to facilitate the June 30, 2023, closing of the 2023 fiscal year, or take any other action relative there, too. It's a lot of money being moved around just to different accounts. Do you want me to read specifically, or?
If somebody would request a reading, you can. If not, I mean, this is basically, even it outlines, if there's an overage in the personnel line in finance, and there's a shortfall in legal services, we're moving over $5,000, or whatever the services is. The total amount of debits is $286,492.53, and the credits match that at $286,492.53. Finance with a positive recommendation, does not require a second, any further discussion on this motion? Seeing none, I'll ask for a roll call vote.
Consul Honan.
Yes.
Consul Fisillo.
Yes.
Consul Munson.
Yes.
Consul Belcher.
Yes.
Consul DiMarco.
Yes.
Consul Flahcat.
Yes.
Consul Ayello.
Yes.
Vice President Ruggiero.
Yes.
Consul, Consul Vice President Ruggiero.
Sure, yep, so as mentioned earlier, the Rules and Ordnance Subcommittee took up the council rule, Section 2A, which sets our meetings on the first and third Tuesday of every month, beginning at 7:00 PM. The committee voted two to zero in favor of keeping the rule as currently written. Like I mentioned earlier, a lot of this had to do with the ability for the public to participate. Just my own sort of narrative on this, you know, if this rule were in place, our executive session tonight probably would have started at about 5:00 o'clock. And so that's a good example of someone needing to leave early, leave work early to get to that meeting. And even if we were an hour behind, it doesn't seem like we're leaving here much earlier than, you know, potentially 10:00 tonight. So, you know, you're still missing dinner on the back end, and you're missing homework help and bedtime and other things like that. So you're kind of, you know, you're kind of losing on both ends, I guess, as a member of both the public and a member of the council. So, again, open a discussion. There were two members of the Subcommittee that voted on this, so obviously, that's not a majority, but.
It's a majority of the Subcommittee.
Majority of the Subcommittee, but open to further discussion, obviously.
Any discussion? Consul Honan.
I think there's a precedent that these meetings start at 7:00 for a reason. Most of us have full-time jobs, nine-to-five jobs, and taking into consideration commute time, and with, you know, ample time to get home, freshen up, and then get to these meetings, 7:00 is a, is a good time to start these meetings. And as Consul Ruggiero mentioned, 6:00 is cutting it close, very close, too close for many of us, many of us that have full-time jobs and that work outside of town. I have some idea where this proposition came from, and I think we need to go with what was set down by town councils, previous town councils, and what's always been in place, and not change those rules arbitrarily. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Consul Ayello.
I look at it from, from the perspective of family time and dinner and all that stuff. I think it'd be much more difficult for people to start tuning in at 6:00, show up at 6:00, in addition to the stress on, on people who work outside of the community. So my preference would be, I think in the community, we'd better serve by just leaving it as is. I think it works reasonably well.
Any other discussion? I will say, I think going to 6:00 was good. I think if you look at every other committee in town, they start at 6:00. I think in terms of a executive session, you would then have the executive session after. I know if we did move to 6:00, the meetings would not nearly be as fun, because Denise would be right spot-on at every second, and we wouldn't have as much fun as we have if we started 7:00. But I totally understand where everybody feels, it's just, you know, other boards have changed from 7:00 to 6:00, and it seems to have worked out. But, and to Vice President Ruggiero's point, I promise we will be out before 10:00. And even when the meeting starts at 7:00, we are usually out of here in a timely manner. We should maybe consider a rule to cap a meeting at two hours, that might be a different rule down the line. But anyway, it's, it's ready for a vote. All those in favor say aye. So just, yeah. Just to keep those. All those in favor of keeping the meetings at 7:00, say aye.
Aye.
Those know, I will say no, and 8:1, so we'll stay at 7:00. Now, let's go to new business. Fiscal '24 budget, all new business, and this is to get Vice President out of here before 10:00. These first multiple new business items are going to be continued until the next meeting, where we will vote on them. The fiscal '24 budget, the adoption, and along with the budget comes multiple subsequent votes for different enterprise funds and such. But there's the fiscal '24 budget, the adoption of the annual general fund operating budget for fiscal year '24, the adoption of the water and sewer enterprise fund budget for fiscal '24, adoption of the Larry Larson Enterprise Fund Balance for fiscal '24, adoption of ferry enterprise fund balance for fiscal '24, adoption of harbor master enterprise fund budget for fiscal '24, adoption of recreational enterprise fund budget for fiscal '24, adoption of solid waste enterprise fund budget for fiscal '24, adoption of annual revolving budgets for fiscal '24, year-end fund inter-budgetary transfers. That last one, year-end fund, year-end general fund, inter-budgetary transfers for $263,627, that is being sent to finance. The other motions basically came out of finance with the Finance Commission already. They will not be referred to finance, they will be taken up and voted on at the 13th meeting. But that last one for the inter-budgetary transfers will go to finance, and hope that they will have a meeting prior to the 13th. Stop, lose my voice. For committee appointments, I do have a couple. Town council will accept the appointment made by Town Council President to appoint Denise Quest to the Winthrop Disabilities Commission for a term to expire June 30, 2024. Is there a motion? Second by Mr. Consul Ayello? I don't know why, I mean, you're not older than me, Joe, I don't even get it why you're calling this. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those know, the ayes have it. Also, as part of that motion, I'm going to appoint Hannah Belcher to be the Town Council liaison for the Disabilities Commission. And one other motion, recommendation that the town council accept the appointment made by Town Council President to appoint John Morgan to the Winthrop Disabilities Commission for a term to expire June 20, 2026. Motion by Consul Belcher. Second by Consul Munson. Any discussion? I will say, John, this is one of the best appointments I've made. Thank you very much for your service to the town. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those know, the ayes have it. Thank you very much, John. Well deserved. So now, I do have a discussion of Court Road. I've also had correspondence and discussion with people for a while, and these discussions could end up just compiling, compiling, compiling. But the discussion mainly at this point was to take a look at Court Road during Halloween, during that specific day, and maybe taking a look at possibly closing the road, making it a one-way in one direction or such. It's a very dangerous time of year. I think there was further discussion that maybe at a subsequent meeting, we could put this to TSEC just for a recommendation in general on the street, but I am just looking right now for Halloween. It's a very dangerous time of year. I think it's something, you know, I've looked at it two ways. If you, if you distinguish that and close it, maybe it brings more people, and that could be a detriment, maybe. I mean, maybe people like it, maybe people don't. I'm not trying to inundate and tell them they have to buy more candy. I'm just trying to look at something to try to make it a safe way, and I think it's just something that maybe we could send to TSEC. I mean, something like that on a one, one-day thing, I think we have the authority, or the police have the authority to do that. But I think if we think about that, make a recommendation to, you know, I know Consul Munson at Chalk Precinct, you could ask some constituents about that also, but I just think it's something to look at, that, you know, good, bad, or indifferent, it's an incredible atmosphere in that maze area during Halloween, and just trying to make it as safe as possible. And I think having some transition on that street. There are a lot of one-way streets in the maze as it is, Court Road isn't, but maybe doing something for that particular day might be something we take a look at, so.
So how would they do that for one day? Put some kind of barricade?
Well, they would have.
At each of the streets that go into Court Road?
Well, you'd either, right, you'd obviously let residents have the ability to get in and out, because they need to do that, but it would just be more, right, you'd pick a timeframe and say from 3:00 to 8:00, or 3:00 to 7:00, you know, there's no way. Kind of similar to what we do for the fireworks down the point. You know, residents still have right-of-way and access points, but just something to take a look at, try to be safe, and so that's that, so we'll. Can we have TSEC review it, or should we just, do you think it's? We could have TSEC review it, but I think that's something I'd rather just ask the chief first for his thought, because if we were to one-day, if we get to the point where we say, you know, your precinct thinks that it requires a TSEC recommendation of a potential one-way, then we would send it to TSEC. But I think for, for the safety concerns now, I think we just want to have a plan in place. Consul Ayello?
Yeah, no, I agree, it's very, very problematic, but I would, since Chalk Precinct, you may want to think about a community meeting as well, after the sort of professionals can think about, can we shut it down for 12 hours, 3 hours, or make it one-way, et cetera? Because it's going to be a pretty hot topic, you would imagine, so.
Well, it's a zoo, and I just recommend people don't drive during that.
It's a wonderful environment, but, yeah, the cars are.
I mean, I just recommend people get on the foot and do it that way, it's much safer. But I would be happy to take the lead on that.
Okay.
President.
Yes, Vice President.
It's been a while since I've been trick-or-treating, admittedly, but.
Hasn't been that long.
No, it's been a while. I'm curious what other kind of neighborhoods and streets are sort of impacted on Halloween, and I know that that's probably a night where we have all hands on deck as far as the police department goes, but in addition to Court Road, are there any other streets in the maze or any other neighborhoods that might be as busy? Or I think it's an interesting idea, something to look at, but, you know. Or I, I think it's an interesting idea, um, something to look at, but, you know, um.
Court Road didn't trick-or-treat in that neighborhood either.
A lot of the roads in the maze are one-ways now, so it wouldn't have as much of an impact. And I think the PTO, PTA of, of the, um, ATC has over the last couple of years done a trunk-or-tree, which has been incredibly successful, I think more than they ever would have thought. Um, and that's kind of diminished some of the fringe streets, I guess.
It has.
But no matter what's done, that maze area gets inundated, um, which is incredible. I, I know it's plus and minus for everybody, but it's just, it's an incredible sight, and I know a lot of the homeowners, you know, have little parties and such and neighborhood parties and such, but, um, you know, safety first, right? Um, all right, let's move on. To, um, I'm going to ask for a motion to waive council rule 2A for council meetings. We have a scheduled council meeting for June, would be the 20th, where we've had a meeting on the 6th, we'll have a meeting on the 13th. Um, I'm also asking that we suspend the meeting on July 4th, right? So if we don't have that meeting on July 4th, which I assume would pass here, we would go from the 20th of June until the 21st of July or the 19th of July, um, which I think, right? 27th is what we're trying to move to. But if we did not move this rule, if we did not suspend the council rules and adjust the meeting from the 20th to the 27th, we would go from the 20th of June until the 18th of July, and I think that would be too long to go, especially where it's, you know, the 20, moving it to the 22nd also gives us the opportunity where the close at the end of year is, um, is that right? 27th, right?
Yeah.
So if, that also gives us the opportunity where it's close to the end of the month. If we need any last-second things for the closeout of the year, we could do it at that meeting. So we could discuss it first. I'd like to ask for a motion to suspend council rules to amend the June 2023 calendar, to, uh, remove the meeting on the 20th, to amend it to the 27th, and as well to remove the meeting of July 4th.
Motion. Motion by Consul Fusillo, second by Consul Flockhart. Discussion on the motion. I do know, unfortunately, Vice President Gero, uh, will not be in the, uh, area code, I don't believe, on the 27th.
Yeah, so just out of, uh, principle, I, I would vote this down, but there are nine councilors, um, for a reason. Um, with the 27th being the fourth Tuesday of the month and not the first or third Tuesday, I do have a prior commitment on the 27th, so I would not be able to make that meeting.
Now, if, again, this is a recommendation because, again, we try to keep with precedent and stay on Tuesdays, we could have the meeting on, on a Monday, the 26th. I'm not sure what's in the hobby room, but we could alternate it to the 26th if that helps anybody, if, if, I mean.
Doesn't help me.
We would love to have both of yous there, but we could have a meeting. I don't think it's going to be a mind-blowing meeting, but, um, so there is a motion right now, uh, to suspend council rules to, we would continue to have the meeting on the 13th for the budget. We would then have a meeting on the 27th and then on July 18th. Any further discussion?
One quick question.
Yes.
All locations would still remain here and all start times would still remain at seven.
Well, 7:05 for you, right?
I didn't give any grief about this two-way rule.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, others in favor say aye. Opposed, no. One, no. It passes. Thank you. Public comment. Yes, school committee woman.
Hi, thanks for coming. Um, I did, um, I'm precinct four. I just want to mention this issue about Walden Street. I know that you've gotten some comments about Walden Street. I happen to watch that traffic pretty closely. We walk through, it is very heavy sometimes. The traffic goes very quickly. There's a lot of trucks that come through there. I don't know if we could put anything on that street, like speed bumps to slow it down, but it is already problematic. Also, with the new restaurant, there's a lot of people that park, that don't pay attention to the rules of parking, and they park right up against the, um, crosswalks, and, um, so they don't pay attention to that. Also, I think that it's, it's just the kids. So it's not that I oppose, uh, I oppose a bus coming down that street. It's just how are we going to keep that street safe? Because it, it is problematic. Also, when you look at what, at that, at the crosswalk where the kids play basketball and where the kids on the other side are playing softball, people are, parents are parking right up against that crosswalk because they want to watch their kids play. And a couple of times, I've been trying, I've tried to go slow and I didn't see a child or a parent that slips between those cars, and I'm just terrified that I'm going to hurt somebody. So I don't, I, I wish, Tony, that you could look at that holistically and see if there's anything we can do to either put a traffic light at Lincoln and, and Walden, or if we could do something to slow that traffic down, because it's, people are not paying attention to that 23, so.
Thank you. Yes, John.
Hi, John Morgan, precinct four. Number one, thank you for reporting to me. I've been waiting five years to be on this committee, and I'm really excited for, uh, that, and then having Denise and, and Consul Belcher as, uh, uh, will only help us, uh, to get to the goals that we hope to get to. And if I may please, Tony, um, as my first official complaint, uh. Uh, could you have somebody trim the trees over there? Because they are very low-hanging and, and they, uh, impeding pedestrians.
Where, where Belcher?
Right outside the door. You know? You know, you never know when you're going to walk into a tree, never mind just the branches.
No requests until you get sworn in, John.
Well, then I'll put it on hold, but.
We heard you a lot of them, but.
Thank you.
Mr. Doug.
Thank you. Jack, our precinct one, concerning your comments concerning the activities you're proposing on, uh, Pauline Street, the school site. I believe there's two parcels are laying there, 141, uh, Pauline Street and 151 Pauline Street.
Yes.
I'm sure Mr. Gill is going to appreciate, uh, mentioning that he would like to see three, two family houses. He's been talking about that for years, so he's, he's really going to appreciate that, I'm sure. The other thing, right now, um, these two parcels that I just mentioned are in the Senate Business District. So I'm assuming from your comments that Ingleside Park is not for sale anymore.
Never was for me.
Well, it's in the Senate Business District.
Mm-hmm.
It's been proposed since 2017 that it could be for sale, so I'm, I'm assuming now that it is not going to be for sale, with, with your comments tonight.
I, I, I don't know what you mean by that not for sale. I mean, if, if what I envisioned came to fruition, those parcels, you know, three parcels would, you know, there would have to be.
What I'm suggesting is, uh, excuse me, what I'm suggesting is take, uh, those parcels out of the Senate Business District.
Oh, there would have to be, uh, you know, it's, it's not a.
Let's stop that process. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
There we go.
Appreciate it. Anybody on Zoom? Uh, anybody on Zoom? Mr. Schmid.
Um, Bill Schmid, precinct five. I'm not going to talk about birds and bees, but I want to echo the comments that, uh, Ms. Fock talked about, uh, Walden Street, because I, particularly about the fact that the cars are parking so close to the sidewalk, because I have driven down there at reasonable speed, and you don't see somebody coming out, particularly kids all of a sudden running across, uh, from one side to the other with the parking, so that's a very serious problem. We don't want to have a serious incident there at some point.
Do you have one more comment?
Oh, well, Mr. Doug.
I've only spent 30 seconds a lot.
Mr. Schmid isn't done yet, I don't believe.
No, no, I'm, I'm sure you. So when we propose this bus rule being changed, that, that'll be alternative one. So then, alternative two, you know, would be, uh, revert back to the existing bus rule. So if that was written into the suggestion, or to the T, or, or to anybody that's concerned, uh, if something happens, you know, I want it to happen much later than sooner, of course, but if something happens, we can immediately, uh, turn back to alternative one.
Thank you. I don't disagree with the fact that, you know, there were cars, there were cars on every road that we've talked about here, almost at every council meetings, that are going faster than they should be. I think the width of that street and the openness of that street, uh, is both a, a help and a detriment to this, right? That the detriment is it increase, it, it entices people just to go a little bit faster. Uh, maybe the buses slow that down, I don't know, but it's, it's something that I think is well worth the, the option. And I think you have to go through a season because it's, it's totally different in the summer than it is during a school year, right, and such. But all the comments are well done, and, and a lot of it goes back to what Consul Ayala says on enforcement, uh, as, as far as crosswalks go, and, you know, these, it was not with little thought, even to the, to the point of where the stop actually would be in terms of looking at potential parking spaces that would be, um, not available, and to make sure that they're marked off. And again, if we, if it's, if we're not making sure that that happens, then shame on us. But thank you for your comments. It's 9:33. Is there a motion? Is there any, um, any, does anybody have any public relations, please? I'll go, I'll start from Consul Honig.
Yeah, just a, a reiteration of what the town manager mentioned, the electronics recycling event on Saturday. Um, it's behind the Parks and Rec building, so it's the, it's the parking lot behind the Parks and Rec, behind the old middle school. It starts at 9:00 AM, and you can bring your old computers, your old TVs, um, small appliances. Um, there is a small cost, um, depending on what you bring, but, um, we, we all have things lying around our house, and nobody's using their CD players anymore, so.
Come on.
Except for Fusillo.
Consul Fusillo. Uh, nothing else. Consul Munson.
I wanted to, uh, reiterate your sentiments about the graduation. They were incredible. It was something that I will never forget, and the dramatic finish with the rain pouring down, it was quite momentous. But, um, congratulations is in due order to all the, all the students of class of 2023, including my daughter, Sophia Grace Munson. Very proud of her. Thank you.
Consul, Consul Kulture.
Thank you. Uh, the Winter Farmers Market kicks off this Sunday at Ingleside Park. Yeah, from nine to one. There are nine markets all the way through October. Um, they have a lot of great vendors and they put in a lot of work, so everyone should go check it out.
Consul Ayala.
Um, number one, again, congratulations to all those who graduated this year. Terrific class. Um, I have to say, my wife's last kindergarten class graduating, so she was, been weepy all week. Uh, anyway, great class. And, um, just a note, uh, the Winterbell GBTQ Pride and Bike Winter are joined together to sponsor a pride ride on, um, June 24th, 2023 at 5:00 PM. So, um, good luck to them, and just want to make sure everybody knew about that.
Consul Flockhart. Vice President Joe.
Uh, just to get us closer to 10:00 PM, I have two items. Uh, one is, uh, on Saturday, June 10th, at 11, from 11:00 AM to 3:00 PM at Ingleside Park, CASA will be hosting Winter Fields Day. Um, there'll be free games, raffles, music, food, and more. It's geared towards Winter Middle and High Schoolers. Uh, youth under the age of 13 must accompanied by a parent, but this is, um, uh, put on by CASA, and, uh, it is a youth-driven and youth-led initiative. Um, so, you know, a lot of CASA's programming is, is done like that, uh, led by the youth and for the youth. So, um, yeah, it should be a great time. Uh, I also do have one other announcement. I was going to, uh, have this run on the Winter transcript, but while we're all here, I figured I'd share it in person as well. Um, to the people of precinct six, the town of Winter, and my colleagues on the Winter Town Council, after much contemplation and reflection, I've reached the conclusion that I will not be running for reelection at the end of this term. It has been an incredible honor to serve as the Precinct Six Councilor, and I am grateful for the trust and support that the community and my colleagues have placed in me. During my tenure, I've had the opportunity to work with amazing individuals and contribute to the growth and progress of our town. However, as with any journey, there comes a time when one must evaluate their aspirations, priorities, and personal circumstances. It is with a heavy heart that I have come to the realization that it's time for me to take a step back from elected office and explore new avenues of service and personal, professional, and academic growth. Please know that this decision was not made lightly, and I have given it considerable thought. My commitment to public service remains steadfast, and I will remain an engaged member of our community and continue to contribute to its growth and well-being in other ways. However, at this time, I believe it is in the best interest of both myself and the community to pass the proverbial torch to another leader in our precinct who can continue to build upon all that this, all that this council has accomplished and will accomplish throughout the remainder of 2023. As my term comes to a close, I'm committed to ensuring a smooth transition for my successor. I will be available to offer any assistance or guidance required during this period. It is my hope that by declaring my intentions at this time, other dedicated members of our community may begin to have discussions with their friends and families before we enter the official start of summer and emerge as viable candidates for this seat. In closing, while there'll be plenty of time for expressions of gratitude and appreciation at a later date, I would be remiss if I did not thank my dad, Steven Senior, my mom, Martha, for all their love, support, and guidance, as well as my favorite precinct stitch, precinct six constituent, my grandfather Frank, who is most likely sitting at home right now, watching this live on CAT. Um, and last, my grandmother, Violenti, who is definitely not watching this right now on CAT, because she lives in East Boston and, uh, cannot figure out how to do the live stream on her iPad. But, um, thank you all for allowing me to share, uh, this message and this journey with you all, and, um, let's just keep up the great work for the rest of the year.
Well, that kind of took the wind out of a lot of sails here, but, uh, um, you know, we, we have you until the first Tuesday in January, so we'll continue to relish that. Um, you know, you came on as a kid, basically, and, and you've spent the, the better part of four years now here, and it's, uh, you've grown incredibly as a, as a, I don't want to say young man and be like a bad guy or something, but as a, as a young man, and, and your professionalism is always remarkable, your integrity is second to none, and, uh, you'll be sorely missed on this council, so, um.
You're here.
Thank you for your service. And with that, I'll say nomination papers for the, you know. The November 7th, 2023 election are now available at the town clerk's office. Deadline to return is September 19th, 2023. Uh, we did talk about the town ordinance, uh, for the trash ordinance. I, I encourage people to, um, look on the town website for the flyer, get the flyer in the mail. If you have any questions, uh, call Vice President Gero, who will be handling most of the complaints over the next six months. But no, we, we know that this will be, you know, this will be a, a tough transition for a lot of people, and, um, we understand that, and we hope you understand where we came from with this ordinance. Uh, we're always trying to make Winter a better place, and, you know, we, I have driven around the town a lot recently, um, and I, I do think the town looks great, and, um, you know, this board isn't, you know, we can't call ourselves volunteers, but, because we do get a, a, a small stipend, but, um, you know, we do put in a lot of work, and, uh, I think we've done a really good job this last year, especially, and, and a lot of that, kudos go to Tony and his staff. So, um, thank you, everybody. Again, congratulations to the kids on, uh, graduation, and I'll entertain several motions to adjourn. Motion by Consul, second by Consul Fusillo. All those in favor say aye. Opposed, no. The ayes have it. You may adjourn.